Yeah.
Heritage Health.
I'd like to call to order today's school board work session. Today's date is February 8th. It's Friday. And Denise, if you want to introduce.
Sure, I'd be glad to, thank you. So we have Nikhil and Abdulaziz who are here. They weren't with us last night. We told them to stay home out of the cold. But they have some timely information that they asked if they could share with you. So after talking with the chair, we said that at the beginning of the meeting today, we could give them a few minutes to share their information with, have a discussion. So I'm going to turn it over to Nikhil. Nikhil?
Thank you. I'll make up for missing our section of the student report. So I'll just start with that at first. On Monday, even though there was a late start, Stillwater's top band, choir, and orchestras went to the SEC Music Festival hosted at White Bear High School. Total of nine schools participated and had clinics with experienced music directors, and students spent the whole day listening to different ensembles. This past Saturday, we held the annual Snowball Dance. This dance is one of Stillwater's best-selling school dances, and has quite the reputation to students. Also, something Student Council is looking forward to and working on currently is Blast Week, the first day of that, which will be on Monday. Blast Week stands for Be Loving and Sharing Together. Student Council and the high school use this week to show diversity in many other cultural affairs going on within our school and the student body. There are many things that the students can look forward to. For example, a Girls of Color panel, a hip-hop dance lesson in the gymnasium, presentations on Black history, musical performances by students, a Heritage Fashion Show, and a Women in Politics panel. For sports, yesterday, unfortunately, all school activities were canceled due to the weather. But it's senior night tonight for Varsity Gymnastics at 6:00 PM hosted at Stillwater Area High School. At 5:30, there's a varsity wrestling match that, there's a varsity wrestling match at Woodbury High School. Now, something Abdul and I would like to address is student voice in general. Moving forward with this relatively new school board, there's something that we would like to address. We understand our role as, on the board, as student representatives, and strive for more than just giving a student. As the name suggests, we aim to represent the student body and give student voice. From this point, we intend to be more active in discussion when necessary. We are extremely grateful for this opportunity and look forward to the rest of our time on this board. Now, I'd like to pass it off to my co-president, Abdulaziz Mohammed.
Thank you.
So moving on, we have a proposal for the Board of Education members today. So as a part of AMSD's statewide Reimagine Minnesota's commitment to creating lasting equity and excellence in education for all students, school board student representatives, Nikhil and I would like to invite you to participate in a professional development opportunity titled Culturally Responsible Board Leadership. This workshop is connected to Reimagine Minnesota Strategy F, a program to eliminate disproportionality due to adult behaviors and policies. And we'll have board members from several other districts in the surrounding area that will be also attending. On the front of the packet that we passed out, you will find three workshops in culturally responsible leadership for school board members. Each workshop focuses on ways to build internal capacity for culturally responsible leadership and collective capacity for school board governance using an equity lens. For those wondering, every workshop has an essential question. Workshop 101 deals with the question, what questions can I begin to ask that leads to developing equity in a district? Workshop 202's question is, as acting as a single entity, what can we do as a board to affect systematic change? Workshop 303's question is, how do we handle pushback when doing equity work? In terms of the price, the cost is $75 per member per workshop session. Do any of the board members have any questions or comments regarding anything that we stated prior?
I probably need time to read it over and look at it.
Yeah.
But thank you for bringing it to us.
No problem. Thank you.
I have one question. Abdulaziz, is, so is it, I'm just looking at this, it's per board or per board member?
I believe it's per board member.
Okay. And we can sign up, oh, okay, so our sign up here is contact Paula O'Loughlin.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And aren't we still a member district through the school year? So we'd still be, it would be the $30 price, I think, for us.
As we go till June? Anything else you want to tell us?
Nothing at this moment.
Abdulaziz?
Yeah.
I'll just add something quickly. Last night, Director Burns gave the board the Cruz Guzman conversation about the lawsuit presently with the state of Minnesota. And when you look at this, I was just sharing with him last night that the Reimagine Minnesota work is really to address the concerns in this lawsuit. And so with the Reimagine Minnesota work, there are nine strategies, and the strategies listed here are three of those. So there's a nice kind of alignment between that work.
And all of these are self-contained?
Correct.
Like a person could take 101, but you don't have to take that in order to take the second or the third one?
Yeah, these are all separate with separate dates as well.
One other connection that you made me think of Superintendent Pontrelli is, we've tried this past year to embed Reimagine Minnesota sections into our World's Best Workforce. And so this would be another opportunity to make a connection there with our World's Best Workforce, reducing the achievement gap and racial and economic achievement gap. This would be, fall under one of those strategies to try to build capacity. So that's how it's connected with World's Best Workforce. I know that that's an important piece for the board.
Jennifer?
I'm just, just, thank you, Chair. I'm passing that to you. So I'm the new EMIAD representative, and I'm getting my feet wet. We just had the one, the first meeting, and I wanted to let you guys know, I announced this last night, that another major issue that was discussed at my first EMIAD meeting was, is the difficulty in hiring and retaining teachers of color and how incredibly important that is. So I raised that last night during my board report, that that's something that we all need to be acutely aware of, and that's something as well that EMIAD is paying close attention to. So thank you for your advocacy.
The other thing I'd mention too is typically, excuse me, board members who want to attend, just contact Barb, and then Barb will take care of the actual registration for you. And then what typically she does as well is that if she sees there's a couple of board members going the same night, she'll put that information out there so if people want to carpool to attend that, they can. Anything else you want to say?
Nothing at the moment.
Anybody else comment? And you said you wanted to stay for the rest of the meeting tonight? Or did I mistake?
Nikhil's gone out.
We're doing the crowd until we decide to leave.
That's a plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, our, it looks like our one and only agenda item is budget adjustment conversation. And so that's where we'll begin.
Thank you. So the last time the board meant to have a discussion about budget adjustments, you asked us to come back and share some more information with you. You wanted the list of the past budget adjustments that were approved, and then asked for a little bit more information on attrition. We brought you some information on an approval process for staffing that relates to attrition and looking at the staffing as people leave positions. We have the past adjustments, as I mentioned. We have future adjustments that we feel we should be taking a look at. We did meet, as we mentioned, with our principals and our directors again to look at other options. You'll see that some of them are options that we've had in the past. We know this is a new board, so you might have different feelings on some of those. And then we also have the consultant list, and if there are additional questions about that or you want to dig into that, we're happy to do that. So I guess that I would ask is if we start, you're familiar with the first page of your staple packet that has the school budget adjustments that we approved on December 20th. And then the second page, we'll walk through this process with you at the top. You'll see that we have the 1920 deficit prior to the adjustments, and at that time it was $1,816,435. Then after the budget adjustments that were approved on December 20th, we were down to $1,081. And then the remaining budget deficit that we need to balance the budget as presented on January 11th is $735,435. And so then you see below that the things that we heard from you that you wanted a conversation about, which we're ready to do today. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McDowell, and he's going to bring you through the first portion of the options to reach a balanced budget.
Thank you. So the way that the sheet is set up, or the lens that we took, was from the angle of how do we, how do we keep it, again, re-looking at it for a second time, how do we keep it as far away from that student and teacher classroom experience and then try to winnow it down? So that's, that's how things are broken up, at least from our perspective. So the first set of boxes there, really you can see on the left, is what we consider options to reach what is the balanced budget, not getting into fund balance, just that, trying to get to that $735,000 mark. And so that's what, that's what those pieces are in there. You'll see that the first two items are the athletic fees, and those are items that were on the original list that the past board chose not to approve. And with the theory of staying far away from the classroom experience, we put those back on. We then took a look at custodial, sorry, custodial staff, further reducing administrative costs, and talking with principals at the elementary level, reducing our general para-allocation, so that would be per building by three hours, and then reducing the technology budget. So all of those, you'll see that first subtotal come to a little over $800,000, which would get us to a balanced budget, again, not inclusive of the fund balance conversation.
And then Kristin, would you mind sharing just a little bit about outlooks and some of the things that we've talked about?
Absolutely. So for boards that have had me present to them in the past, you've heard me say, as far as a budget goes, it's, you know, it's an ever-moving document. When the board adopted the revised budget, it was from work for 2018-19. It was essentially created in November. We were basing it off of October 1 numbers and the information that we knew at that time. Here we sit in February, and I can say we've had some changes to that. Obviously, the snow days come into play. As far as you could look and say, without transporting, we will have savings. I know at one time when we were reviewing the disbursements, the question came up about snow removal and heating costs, and look how good we were doing, and that came back and bit us pretty hard. So that's probably not going to be, anyway, the point being is, it is an ever-changing document. Even with the decision last night about the cell towers, what was projected has changed, and these numbers have changed. I believe that special education, that formula has just changed, and I believe we will get more money in. And kind of why I'm pointing all of this out, and I've said it to all the boards that I've worked with in the past, is at least my opinion of the unassigned general fund balance, as far as one of the reasons for it to exist, is to help eliminate sort of the peaks and valleys of the budget cycle. Because on a daily basis, decisions and information changes. And so when you are looking and considering, you know, what do we need to get to 5%, what is your goal, what do you want that to look like? What I'm saying to you is honestly, even how we'll end this year and how we will start next year has already changed. And so maybe just take into consideration, as you're making those decisions, what your plan is for the fund balance and the intent to use it, because if it is to kind of stable peaks and valleys where we cut one year and then maybe we add back the next year and let it ride out a little bit, it might help with your decision-making on how far you go. Because it's, again, even up to last night, it changed. So.
And to that end, that gets us then to the bottom half of the page, which everything, everything in the bottom half would then be, in addition to balancing, this would be work to get towards getting the fund balance back up to the 5%. Again, you'll see a couple of things in there that were in there before. There's additional professional development. The previous board talked about the ACT, paying for ACT testing in there. There's a restructuring to the 6th, 7th, and 8th only gate programs with the support of those, nothing to do with the 4, 5, but the 6, 7, 8, which is a different thing. A reduction in elementary specialists, and when we get to that, Kathy can talk specifically what that looks like. And then one thing we did put back on there, because we had worked through numbers one more time, is what, what does it look like if we were to change the staffing ratio by one, just 6th grade through 12th grade? And what could we recoup in a single year for that in terms of the budget? True, we did look at elementary, we looked farther down in elementary with that last one, but it didn't, it didn't save us, based on how we are currently staffing, it didn't save us a significant amount of money. So that's why it stops at 6th grade and goes up.
One of the additional things that we, our principal shared with us from the high school, is there is a process for any of our students who are unable to pay for the ACT. And so if, if you would choose to do that, you won't be putting students in a position where if they couldn't afford it, that they couldn't take it. Before we dig into the next list of adjustments, we also have something else, and this is, this is more for your information, but we created for you just a position approval process that we've used in the past, and it's to Mike's question of attrition. So how do we have a process in place when a position, a person leaves the district for whatever reason? It could be a, you know, they're, they're moving away, or they've gotten another job, any of those kinds of things. How do we look at that position and determine if it's needed and if we should be replacing it? And so this is an updated version of that, and Kathy, is there anything that you want to say with regard to that?
No, really what this does is puts a pretty strict process in for positions, I guess the answer is yes. This puts a pretty strict process in when we have positions that come open. So all of the requisitions in our, in our job posting system would now flow through a system where they go through a series of, have to be approved. There's positions that we allocate for the teaching positions, and those will just come through HR. They're part of our FTE in our classrooms. If we have changes in those, those would come through me, and I would post them, and we would put those through the process. We would, though, put positions that were not allocated through the HR allocation process if somebody's increasing or adding hours to positions or FTE, if they are new positions or, and to your point, I think you've brought up a couple of times, Mike, and B, if there are positions where somebody has left the position, we will really look at that position, analyze it, and decide, do we need to continue it? Do we need to continue it at the level that it was? Or can it not continue or continue at something less than it was? So this kind of lays that process out for you. And we, this is just, we're in the process of updating and working to get this reimplemented. The other piece that we've done in the past that we've talked about, looking at doing, is we've had a threshold where we've taken an average teacher hire and said, if someone's going to hire a position higher than this salary, then it needs to go through, again, these three levels of approval. And so we're in the middle of talking about, do we look at reimplementing that process as well?
And thank you for the work and the thought that went into that. And I think, you know, it's a potential thing that we can look at. One other thing, and I'm not proposing that now, but I'm saying to look at is, on my right is Shelley, and obviously Shelley is the Chair of the Personnel Committee. And so that might be built into part of the process. And again, I don't have that in my mind yet, but that's something we may want to look at. So that committee could be kind of a sounding board for you in certain types of position. I'm not presuming all, but in the concept of.
Okay, Sarah, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or?
And then we have one more thing, and then you'll be ready to engage in your discussion. We have the 2017-18 consulting cost by category, and we're ready to answer any questions that you have with that. One of the things, just to remind the community and the board, is that through your previous cuts to professional learning, many of the things that are listed under the staff training will already be cut because we won't be having professional learning days or people coming in to provide that training. So this is this last year's, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have about what those things are. We also, at that time, can answer a few questions. There are some overlaps when you look at some of the consultants. For instance, when you look at teamwork, it could be demographic work, it could be working with our principals. Some of the people listed work in various parts within the district.
I'm just looking for questions or comments, anyone?
Can I, I just, I just have to, I don't want to let the moment go, thank you. Just back to your comment about the Personnel Committee, I don't feel comfortable just making a blanket recommendation at this time. If that's something that you suggest, I want, I highly recommend that comes in another discussion point at a different time. Okay, thank you.
And the Personnel Committee has not met at all yet. But I'm saying, if there's something that come out of that, we'll try to run it by the general.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So is this, this a comprehensive list of all the consultants that are paid? So does this include attorney, what we pay to our attorneys and what we pay to our financial advisor also?
It should be in there. Do you have?
It would probably, in some cases, be listed by the attorney and the amount, and sometimes, and that came up with some of my conversation with Kristin, sometimes those are, there's some privacy that gets involved.
Oh, Kristin, do you want to?
Kristin, are the, is legal counsel coded to consultants, or is that in a different budget?
It should be, it should be under consulting. I do see a patch in Mezner in there on one of the pages in my quick peruse.
Okay, what's the question again, Kathy?
My question was, from the budget side of things, is legal coded as a consultant or is it under a different budget?
Thank you. Unsure at this point or? While we wait, Superintendent Pontrelli, is there anything else you want to share?
No.
Is there any particular procedure you want to follow? I have some ideas, but isn't necessarily the best. I'm thinking, one way we might do this is to start with the second page, and go down, take one item, and see if there's any questions or comments on that item. Not take any kind of poll, but go to the second item, and then go through that first sub-list. And then once we've got that, I think similar to what we did with our original first page with a different board granted, is that we would talk about each item and get some sort of feeling from the group. Is that okay? Director Pearson?
Thank you, yeah, I think that'd be good. And just a couple, I think, points of clarification, as I think we don't have to just stick to one list, but can, because I don't think we'll probably land with everything in the top list, that we can look at all of that. And I, I don't know if there's other items that we still want to put on the list, but that's still possible also.
Anyone else care to comment? So the idea is that, okay, we would go first to the options to reach a balanced budget, and again, perhaps we do it now, or we do it when we've gone to the subtotal 808,000, and at that point, anybody could add items for consideration? Is that what you're saying, Shelley? Okay. So having done that, let's go to the very first item there, and it's proposed at a estimated savings of $48,000 to increase high school athletic fee.
Your Riley?
Could you tell me, in that $48,000, is that a certain percentage to each sport? And what that percentage would be? Is that how you get that?
No, there was actually a list that Mr. Michael had presented to the board, and they kind of picked and choose, chose areas. It wasn't necessarily, there might have been a flat fee as a part of it, but it, it was swapping out supply and material and doing a different, different method, and then actually raising the fee. So then, sports would be able to set aside some money for uniforms. So there were different components that made up all of that. I know, and I don't remember the discussion specifically, but it was talking about, do you pay for a letter? Like the actual physical letter? Again, so it's a makeup of different things that came out of that discussion.
And the original amount was higher, is that right? It was like 70?
It was significantly higher, yeah.
Like 75,000. I have the list, but I'm not sure which, which from that is the 48,000. Because that was my question too, whether it's going to be straight across the board, increases to all activities, or what it would cover.
Or could it be, and what would it be? You know what I mean? Just increase a percent across the board? I've been approached by others about our fee for dance team is relatively low, and we're fundraising like crazy, and they were asking why we don't pay more. So I was just wondering if there was a percentage, it might not be hit so hard on one.
Right, and there, and it was, and again, I'm trying to remember, and Shelley has the list, back to the discussions of the service-based organizations, you know, they didn't have any, there was nothing, no fee to even cover an advisor cost, and it was proposed that that was going to be, and I think that was, the board had no interest in that, if that's my recall. So.
I would like, if you could, ask them to look at what that would be, if we could start doing a percentage fee?
Well, and what's on this list is a lot of things, like all clubs with paid advisors must have a fee, add $20 participation for theater and music. So I think it was a, it was a hodgepodge. So maybe if we could get that for our next conversation, what the 48,000 would be, which off the list it would be covering.
So I think what you're asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, is more specificity in terms of the events, or rather, in terms of the activity, and what the increased fee would mean for each of those?
I would like to see if they gave just a flat percentage fee to every participant across the board, how much that would be, or how much that would increase their tuition for that sport.
And I think, Kristin, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not the same. It's not one percentage that carries all the way through. It's more individualized than that.
Yeah, I think Bob said that we might be able to take a look at that.
Good.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can ask the question and get the percentage. I don't, I don't know what it will turn out as. I know that it'll be, a flat percentage will be different for the different sport. So.
Right.
We can ask Ricky to run it.
It might be helpful too, even if we've got this, and while you're grabbing it. Go ahead, please.
So the potential high school athletic activity adjustment, and I do have the survey, if we, and again, it has my scratching on it, but if people want to look at it, we can pass that around. We were looking at an independent provider fees increase to $75, increase cost of fan buses for students to state tournaments, increase concert tickets by $1, add $20 participation fee for all theater and music productions, increase speech and debate participation fees by $20, after-school weightlifting transfers to community ed, academic and curriculum-based lettering increases to $10, increase fee $70 per sport, which, that's what I was talking about with the uniforms, where 20, 20 is district, goes to district, 25 goes to sport, 25 goes to uniform, which then all eliminates all of the supply and equipment budgets, increase hockey fees to $450 per participant, eliminate advisor positions for clubs that do not have at least 12 paid members, restructure price for all clubs and fine arts to $75 each with no cap, cap entry fees to $600 per sport where applicable, and eliminate meal money for state tournament teams and individuals. And then the one that I would question without totaling this up was also on the table, but I have it circled, is all clubs with paid advisors must have a fee, for example, National Honor Society, math league, prom, pep band, community service, et cetera.
So the list with all of that is 73,000, so something in there we must have dropped?
So no, I have So no, I have a strike through on eliminate the third sport discount for all athletes. I have a strike through.
Yeah, that's all, no, I mean, just one through 15 is $73,000.
Yep. And then, like I say, the number four and number 10 have circles around them. And I would, you know.
So why don't we, if you'd like, Chris has offered, she can make copies for every one of that past sheet for folks. And then, we'll check in with Ricky Michael about what the, to Director Riley's question about what a flat fee percentage, because you might want to do that and take away a few of the others on the other side.
Do you have percentages you're thinking?
No.
Okay.
I don't know the amount of activities. We have participations.
Let's start with, do a 5% and a 10%. Let's do both. They're going to run them.
That's what I, perfect.
I would say 5 and 10. Then we have options.
Okay, so what we'll do is, you're going to do that while we talk and go on?
I'm going to send an email to Ricky right now. Thank you, to answer your question.
And we're getting the list read. Can you just use the specifics?
And I'll just, if I may add, comment that I did meet with Ricky Michael two or three weeks ago. And he indicated to me that the athletic department, coaches were in support of this potential increase in fees.
Our high school staff also, again, said that, and I think some of you know this who have had students in the middle school, when you're in those traveling clubs and then come to the high school, it seems actually like a bit of a gift because the fees are less than they're used to paying, so they didn't feel like that would be a hardship.
Which I would say yes and no, because some kids aren't coming from the club, right? They're just, and so you have a few kids you're paying. Yeah, which, I agree that for some it's that, but for some, for some, they will make a decision not to play or not to participate if it gets too high.
Other comments? Should we move on to the next item, which is shift middle school athletics to community education?
I would just like to know what that means. I don't understand what that means.
I'll take that one, sure. Sure. What that is, is currently at our middle school level, it's run through the school system. So students that choose to participate and all use middle school basketball. We pay for, they pay their fee to participate, we pay for the coaches. There is a athletic director that is used for all middle school athletics and activities. What would happen is, instead of that running through the school, the building, the school district, it would be, it would look more like a community ed program, where then the students, in part, what the talk was at the board level is that we would keep the fees for the students the same. And they would have their coaches and do the same programming, they just sign up through community ed. In part, because community education has a fund balance that at this time can support the difference in cost between what it costs for us to run the program and what we actually receive in revenue for our participation, which is the discrepancy you see.
Director Pearson?
And I don't know if we can do this, but could we ask in that to address what it would mean for community ed in this, if that's been looked at? Because my concern is, it can't be sustainable that way. Maybe for a year, they could, but it's not like they have a fund balance that will last forever. So if we could look at that. I don't want to do things that aren't sustainable, so if we could just ask that.
And I, so that might be something as you have the bigger conversation, because even cutting professional development isn't sustainable. You know, we had a conversation about competency-based learning. When do our staff get the opportunity to do that? On professional development days with people training them? And so, that might be one of the filters as you go through. And remember, this is to try, help us to get balanced budget for next year. So with that conversation, some of the things you might choose to do might not be sustainable. It might be to get you through next year until you know what the legislature is going to give you for your general fund increase, hopefully, and some of the other things that will happen within the next six months.
And perhaps even your prior talk, where we were talking about approval for filling up positions, that would maybe kick in by that time over the long term, maybe not immediate, but over the long term. Other questions or comments on shift to community ed? Director Riley?
Kristen, so they said they would keep the fees the same going into community ed? And they would be able to support that, but we are not able to support that?
Well, it's a program that we provide and, you know, our job is not to necessarily make money off of it. It does cost the general fund. So the difference you see is, the cut is $170,000. What that would do then is that would take it, transfer it to community ed, keep the fees the same for the students, and it would essentially drop the community ed fund balance
Because those don't break even.
Correct.
Break even with that. So do we look at fees on those?
Eventually.
Well, so that's where my concern would be, community ed can't do it forever. And so then, we would be looking at increased fee for families again, looking at it for high school and then for middle school.
Well, and we do have the option to look at fees for the middle school and keep the programming.
Right.
With, I mean, that's, it's the same option.
That we're doing in the first scenario.
So.
Director Stivlin.
Thank you.
So, did I understand you correctly, that that program does not make enough money to sustain itself? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we always.
So.
Work through the chair, please.
Why wouldn't we consider increasing the fees so that we can at least break even?
I believe the direction of the prior board was not, but maybe, we certainly can.
How much are we looking at? Are we looking at a big, huge amount?
Well, you're looking, $170,000.
No, 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 I mean, for it to break even.
That's what.
We'd have to divide that by middle school sports. Okay, I misunderstood. Feel a break even, that's okay.
I think, as I heard it, I think what the point was, is this might work in the short term, in the long term. You can't always assume that community ed is going to have a better fund balance than we do.
And the intent of.
Is that correct?
That's correct. And the intent of the shift, right, is to get that $170,000 out of the general fund expense and you transfer to the community ed fund expense, because that's what's above and beyond the, do you get the fee?
Oh, I see.
Does that make sense?
And right now, that's a separate bucket.
So once fees are paid, we still have to come up with $170,000 in addition to run the program.
I guess what I was trying to get at then is, what percent is the $170,000 of the whole cost of the middle school program? Like, how much would we have to increase the fees in order to lose the $170,000? Know what I'm saying?
I actually have a spreadsheet, I just don't have my computer with. So that is an easy answer for me, once I have my desktop available.
That would be really great to know, because if we can increase the fees by the same amount, five or 10%, and make up the difference, that might be a better choice than trying to put it on community ed. We still haven't solved the problem of it costing us that much money. Okay.
Director Pelletier?
Thank you for, fair, that's a fair comment there. I don't know who to ask this question to, but if we go to community ed, what type of impact does that have on, you know, just the transition of a program to community ed and then back to the Stillwater model, back to the middle school? Is that a huge to and fro? What does that do to the program, just with the fact that it, this is kind of a short-term solution? So I'm just wondering what kind of impact that would have. I don't know who to ask the question to, but do you have a sense on that at all?
I'm not sure, I think Annette's making some, or has something here for you. I think it's a great question. I mean, there's obviously, you know, families are used to having, I can speak to it as a parent, when I was a matemita, it used to be through the school. And then, when we moved over to the community ed base, I started getting the flyers and things from community ed. It wasn't a big difference as far as a parent or a child, it's just who's administering it. So I don't know that it's a huge thing, but I think the comment that you've all made is that it's not sustainable at that. And so, looking at what the cost is, as Sarah had said, and seeing what that might be, I think is good information to have.
So this, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, I think this came, this is the sports thing, but I think, and that was, wondering if she could address that.
Annette, could you? Yeah, sure. You could have a seat, Kathy.
So is there a particular question you want me to ask or answer right now? Because there was a lot of different things being thrown out here, and I was passing out papers.
I think it's Jen's question.
Well, I, so my question is, just has to do more with, what is the impact of the program in general? The program, for one thing. And also, you know, to families to kind of jockey back and forth, so we go to community ed, knowing that that decision is not sustainable. And then, at some point, coming back, hopefully, we can come back after a certain amount of time. What I'm wondering is, what is the impact of that negative or positive? Is it something that would greatly affect the richness of the program?
It's hard to say without doing further investigation on each of the programs and what their current enrollment is and so on. But that, the, if, one thing we can say for sure, by shifting it over to community education, there would be a need to run it through our registration system versus, right, schools. And so, there would, families that haven't already registered through community education would have to set up an account through that and manage it that way, right? So there would be that impact of shifting to a different form of registration and then going back to the old form. Does that make sense, right?
It does, and, yeah, I, that doesn't seem like a terrible impact to me at this, you know.
It's more of an internal impact, right?
Right, exactly, exactly.
Because we're building a system for them to do it in.
Okay.
Director Riley?
So when the middle school sports programs happen, what is the capabilities of kids that aren't enrolled in Stillwater to participate? And does that, moving that over to community ed then maybe increase the ability?
For people to participate? That's an excellent question. We'd have to look at that more. Community education is open to anyone in the community. And so, I guess I can't say no, that it wouldn't be open to the entire community.
And I agree, because I don't know what the present policy is on, say, athletics for that purpose. Again, we're talking middle school.
Correct.
Director Pearson?
So my question was around the funding, because I know the fund balance looks good now, but wouldn't be sustainable. So at some point, can you speak to what would have to happen at some point?
Sure. So there are a number of strategies available to us to try and position a program for financial solvency. And that, one of them, of course, is increasing the rates. And that, you know, certainly with the deficit that I've seen, or not the deficit, but the amount of difference between what's currently brought in in fees versus what's the district is covering, that that would be something that we couldn't shift in one year. That's a large dollar figure to put on the number of students that are participating in that program. But what community education would normally do would be to incrementally increase the rates year after year until they get to a place where it is financially balanced. Other strategies that could be employed would be looking at the transportation. In some cases, school districts that have shifted this program or have found a need to navigate the financial solvency of it, they have eliminated the transportation, asked families to transport the students themselves. Another strategy is marketing, looking at how you reach out to your customers and how you could increase the base. And then, yet another would be to look at where can efficiencies be found? So do we collapse some of the sports? Are there sports that we're really not seeing enough enrollment in? You know, there's a number of different things that would have to go into that to analyze what the most effective strategy would be. And most likely, it would be all of the above, right? You know, that there's not any one solution. You don't want to approach it with just one solution.
Thank you.
That's the second item there?
Oh, just one other question. I thought that at some point, there was a mention about a possible savings, be it administrative or coaching-type savings, going from the current middle school model to if we shifted over to community education. Am I making that up? I thought I remembered that there was something that was a potential savings with that maneuver.
I think the idea was just that there would be a savings in our general fund.
Yeah, and I thought that there was potentially an absolute savings. And it wasn't just a shift, that there was actually. I think that might.
Go ahead. Yeah, we were just commenting on, I'm wondering if you're thinking, Director Burns, about our coaches currently who are under contract through us are on our Schedule C as part of our contract.
Right.
And so, that fee might be different than a same type of coaching thing that's done through community ed.
Okay, but we don't know what that would look like.
Right, we'd have to look at the, analyze it with.
Okay.
Okay, shall we move on to the third item? Thank you. Reduce custodial staff by 4.65 FTE, changing classroom cleaning to every other day.
Pretty self-explanatory. Didn't we already reduce? We reduced operations, cleaning, maintenance, grounds and supplies by $100,000 in the last round of cuts, right?
Correct.
I know supplies were part of what we talked about. Keep in mind, no matter what we take out of here, it's not there by accident. So I mean, there are some things you have to eliminate or reduce if you're going to come up with dollars. Director Pearson?
So this just means no vacuuming, emptying trash? Is that what that, basically, that's what happens every day right now, but would be every other day?
Director Pelletier?
On topic, but a little bit off. Where our decision last night to forego the lease for the cell towers to the tune of $70,000 a year, where does that come? When does that begin to impact these numbers?
Next year's budget. So this budget that we're working with, with the reductions, is the numbers that it will impact. A little bit of history as far as it relates to the question of already putting, you know, having $100,000 in that budget already reduced. My understanding is, back when the cell tower leases were introduced to the district, that money was essentially intended, the purpose of it was to help with field maintenance and was to help with, if we needed any sort of equipment. It was kind of to help the outside, if you will. And so, if you enter into that same philosophy a decade later with $100,000 in cuts, and then if you were to say that, okay, that budget just, assuming, again, it all becomes part of the big pool, right? But if the philosophy held true for a decade, that it was used for field maintenance and improvements, you just eliminated that and then another, you know, we have another whatever it is on the table today. And again, it can all be done, but just back to the intent of what that money, that revenue was to be used for a decade ago.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other questions, should we go to four? Further reduce administrative costs, $100,000. Comments?
Do you know what that would be?
Eliminating positions.
And so, if we want to add things, could, I mean, is this where we would say, I think that could be increased? Or could we increase that one more?
So the reduction you're asking for to be bigger?
Right, for that one.
I guess my response would be a question. I'd like recommendations in terms of where, because it's come up multiple times at this table. I think I've stated before, I don't know where you're going to cut any more out of administrative costs. Your administrative costs aren't just principals, district administrators, it's everything that supports it. We're to the point right now, I mean, we're thin the way that it is. So I guess, I would, I would just come out there and say it. I would caution reducing any more, because it's the people that are supporting the programs that everybody loves. So I don't know where, I will, I'm honestly looking for suggestions if we're thinking we want to cut administrative costs farther.
I think one of the other things that we didn't really spend time or have a conversation on with the first, when we met last time with the budget assumptions, it was, we'd shared with you those multiple spreadsheets of where the increases have been. And the increases that many of you have talked about, when you look at those numbers and say, well, gee, there are 14 positions here, what have they been increased in? We tried to sh- We tried to share that those increases are for the due process paras who help support and relieve our special ed teachers with the paperwork. They are for many of our community ed positions that support the PAC. And so when you see those increases, it looks like, all right, what happened? Well, those are two of the major things that happened. And that doesn't really help your general fund. So, all of the cuts that we've been bringing forward to you with administration are not even those positions you're talking about. Those are positions that if we eliminate, they are categorical funding for special, special education and community education are where those administrative costs and increases have been.
Well, what would this one be?
These are from the general fund, so these are our staff that are out of teaching and learning for the most part. So, you know, it can be a director, coordinator, administrative assistants, all of those kind of things. So, I just want to clarify that, because when you see those increases in numbers, they are for due process and community education. And, but still, the cuts we've been bringing to you are from our general fund. Because those, you know, you, cutting, cutting those positions in community education isn't going to help your general fund. It will help annets, but it won't help this.
And, and that would be true of the community ed positions for the PAC.
Yes, that, that was the, the spreadsheets that we gave you last time, that we outlined where the additional positions had been.
Would that also cover then the due process paras? And those come out of community ed as well?
No, those are special education positions.
Director Wisper?
I guess I'm just confused, because the spreadsheets we had been given showed what happened over the last four years. And over the last four years, sal, I don't know if it's, I guess it's a combination of both, but salaries and positions have increased one point four million dollars in four years. So, it's just hard for me to understand why we can only cut a hundred thousand. Because it looks like we just spent a lot of money in four years, and if that's not sustainable, that's where the cuts need to be. I mean, I'm looking further down the list, and GATE is on here again, and increasing staffing, and I don't consider those options.
So, it'll be helpful to have Kathy explain, because I don't think we spent enough time on this at the last work session. Because sharing that it's, sharing the one point four million increase is only half of the story, because it only shows, again, remember, when it's categorized as administrative, it's what's added to administrative. What hasn't been shared is what came out of other stuff that was already here that's now categories, categorized as administrative or coordinators. For example, just as an example, off the top of my head, we have curriculum coordinators that have been historically out, they were teachers on special assignment. So we're, they're there, we're paying them, they're, but they would show up on the teacher, if we pulled the teacher report, they'd show up there. We shifted those because of our work with the teachers' union, that we don't want to have long-term teachers on special assignment in place. So we shifted those to coordinator positions. Same people, same job, they now fall in the coordinator category, no longer the teacher category. So yes, while it's fair to say, you could look on the, the one side of the sheet and say, you increased coordinators by two, fair enough. But what we also have to then look at is, we reduced teaching FTE by two, because it's the same people, but it's only going to show up on the coordinator side, and we're not looking at the decrease. Another example is in technology. John Perry reduced a ton, I believe it was eight paratech positions, to get to what now are positions that show up on the list that you were provided. So yes, on that list, it shows like an increase, but there were people in positions that were eliminated to get those, so the net is difference. But on, when you look at the administrative costs, and that's how we look at, then yeah, it's going to look like that.
Director Wisper?
Yeah, that's my question still, because if I'm looking at the annual financial report from 2017 to 2018, we increased coordinator positions like you're talking about, but we also increased teachers by forty-two. We increased coordinators by eleven positions, and we increased teachers by forty-two.
But realize the teachers, that, or all of them, quite honestly, is a physical body count, it's not a percent of FTE. So you might have, making it up, you might have five people each being a point two. So you've added five people for a one FTE. So it's not necess, I mean, yes, it's true, the physical bodies, but that does not equate to the FTE that's assigned to those categories.
So it's not necessarily fourteen separate positions, is what you're saying?
Not necessarily.
So it might have been partials.
Forty-two is the difference.
Teaching and, teaching and learning budget has gone up in that same period of time as well. So, the, the net is probably higher, even if some of them are for a time. I think for me, I was, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to add, I think part of what's adding the confusion is, when you're looking at the, the sheet on the, in the budget book that says, number of positions from year to year, and I think that's where you asked, show me where the eleven positions is. What's confusing about that is, when you're looking at those positions across those lines, they're categorized differently than they are in the dollars in the budget lines. So when you're looking at admin support, you're looking at positions, some of them from the directors, some from tech support, so they're all jumbled together, but the positions are pulled out separately. So it, it's not apples to apples, you're not comparing the same things. And I think that might be what, part of what's causing the confusion.
I, I think the hard thing, and this is, I was going to say this with the last one as well, I think the hard thing with looking at these just straight up numbers is, first of all, if, even if we, if we approved all of these items in this first batch, that only gets us to eight hundred thousand. We don't have choices here. So if we say no to any of them, we don't get to the mark. And I, you know, I feel like we need to get to the whole page. So, essentially, if we want to hit the mark, I mean, this is it. We just got to say, okay, that's it, this is what we're going to do. Well, I mean, we're not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with that. So, it's hard to know what options we actually have, because there aren't any options here. You know, I would like to see four or five different things we have to pick one from, you know? And the second part of that is, it's hard to know what these numbers really mean in terms of an overall scope of, you know, size. If we're going to cut four and a half FTEs in, in, in custodial staff, how many do we have on staff all told? What portion of the budget is that? How much of an impact is that going to make? Are our schools going to be filthy dirty if we do that? Like, how big of an impact is it going to be? It's hard to know with all of these what the scale is. And that's why I was thinking that, I really liked your suggestion of saying, you know, if we increase the athletic fees by five percent or ten percent, we know what five percent or ten percent represents, we can see what that looks like in the big picture. I don't really know what this means. And I think that's what the trouble of this whole conversation, if we cut a hundred thousand. I mean, we're trying to make sense of it from our perspective, but I, I don't, I don't really know, it's hard to know what that actually means. And could we say, you know, look, would it be better to just say, find some way to cut one percent out of the budget, out of every department, or something like that, where we know one percent? You know what I'm saying?
Yep. And, you know, I think the thing that we have to remember is, out of your hundred million dollar budget, eighty percent of it is your staff that you, you can't, I mean, you can cut positions, but then that's programming. So if you said, let's cut three positions from where, well, we have to have the conversation about where. Is that from GATE? Is that from, you know, where is that? And I guess that's where, you know, the, our principals and directors, all of us have sat down, and we're trying to keep the least impact on our students that we can. Everything costs money, right? So, if we don't increase fees for things that we want to pay for, I think, and I shared this with the board before, your job as a school board is to make sure that our students who are here from, you know, depending on if they're elementary or secondary, during that school day, that you're delivering the services that they need to be successful. So that means the standards that the, the state outlines for us, that's what happens within the school day. That is your number one job as a school board. And the other things are wonderful to have, we all love them, but, you know, so, when, when we heard, I think what was difficult is when, you know, for instance, when Mr. Michael came to us with a bunch of things that he felt could be cut from the coaches and the people that he talked to, and the board said, well, that was a great hour where we spent, but we're really not interested in that. Those were things that are not hitting inside the classroom. So, you know, I, I guess maybe you need to have a discussion as a board about, is it really, are you going to focus first on trying to keep true to what happens in the classroom and look at the things outside? Or what's your strategy for that? Because the one percent is an easy way to do it. It gets back to the whole Swiss cheese thing that we used to talk about, there ends up being a lot of holes and things. And you just don't get where you need to go, because, you know, over three-quarters of your budget, you don't touch unless, the contracts we have are the contracts we have, and we can't, you know, you don't go back on those. Those are kind of set in stone, and you move forward with that, so.
Thank you. Director Pearson?
Thank you for that. And maybe we do need to visit, maybe what we mean is student experience. I'm not sure that would be a conversation we need to have. But I think just, as I'm trying to figure out the administration thing and why it feels like the jump has been so big, part of it is because we, I don't know how many years ago, Kathy, we went, made the decision to go to average, right, for the positions, and then some of the titles changed, which also increased. And then, as I count this, we did go from eight executive directors and directors to nine. So that does make an impact. But I think once you add all of that up, it looks like a lot. And it is, it is a good portion, but I think trying to figure out where in that could, could we eliminate? Everything's important, every job is important. But when we, we have to hit a number, we, it's hard to know what's the right thing.
And that's where I would say I would answer the question, that's maybe to both of those, is, the list that we're, we have here is our attempt at what you're talking about, Director Stivland, is, and Director Pearson, this is to the question about administration, that's why the number's here. This is what we feel like we can cut in positions to get that much out of it at this point. If we go farther than that, what I can tell you about what's the impact going to be, the impact is going to be a lot less support in our buildings. It will feel like, my, my guess will be, it will be much like my first year in this district, where my phone was ringing off the hook because we weren't able to keep up with all the little stuff that was going on, and the various, various buildings that was happening. And that's the, if you're asking what the impact is when you cut administrative support, totally. Our best guess, and I know, and, and it's no different in any other district, right? When you go through budget cuts, one of the first places that people go is, how do we cut administration, right? Because it's easy to look, they're probably the highest paid in the district, how can we eliminate that? They aren't in the classroom. Get it? I guess, again, to answer the question, what I'm telling you is, in my opinion, this is, right now, this is as far as we can go, before I can tell you anymore what the impact's going to be with that singular line. I'd like to get more out of it, I just, I, I'm honestly not seeing where, where I will pull more than, at this point, what's three hundred thousand out of administrative costs.
Director Pearson?
So how do we measure the impact, then, of the support? So, because I've asked several times, could we ask staff? And I know, you know, we, we want to say, whatever's not in my backyard, that's what I want cut. But how do we get that feedback of how, how is the support affecting our teaching staff? That feels really ambiguous, that I'm not, I don't, we can't put our finger on how, what's the impact, and how important are each of these areas?
I think I can speak to that. You know, our, our, this, this list, we've spent time with our principals on, our principals are the instructional leaders of every school. They know what their school needs, they know what their teachers need. The principals are responsible for what's happening in each of those schools. And so, I trust their intuition when they tell me, you know what, we can make, for instance, the general ed para allocation. When they tell me we can make this work for a year, I trust them, because nobody knows better than your principal what's going to make that building run. Our teachers are fabulous, we, you know, we work IC Josiah Hills here, we have lots of conversations about what's working and what's not. But a teacher only has the view on their classroom and maybe their grade level, they don't see the whole building. So, for me, the, you know, the, who has the keenest sense and feet on the ground with how these are going to impact are our building principals, and these recommendations are from them.
Any other questions coming? Director Wisper?
Yeah, I just, I, I, it's just difficult for me to see the, the percentage of raises that happened in the last four years, and the positions and the increases that happened in the last four years, and to think we can't make more than a hundred, more than three hundred thousand of a cut in admin. And, and I guess last time, the number that I threw out when we were specifically asked to throw out numbers was seven hundred and fifty thousand. So I thought what was going to come back was, this, this was, this would be how we could cut, cut seven hundred and fifty thousand. These, this, this would be what would happen. And that's not what we're looking at, so I don't know that, this doesn't feel any different than what we looked at last time, to me.
Let me, let me suggest the following. One, unless there are other comments on this particular one, we'll move on to the next item. After we've gone through all of the items, then what we're going to do is look for commonality, and at that point, if anybody looks at like the administrative figure and wants to propose a higher figure, we take some sort of poll and, and see where it settles at. And it may settle right where it's at now, or it might settle at a higher figure. Director Stivland?
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear too, I think these are all really good comments, I really like. But for this hundred thousand listed here, further reduce administrative costs, is, can you be any more specific about what that actually means? What, what, what are we looking at actually doing if we were to cut that?
Like I said, it'll be the reduction of it. Right now, three hundred thousand will be reducing director positions, it'll be reducing a part of coordinator positions, it'll be reducing administrative support positions.
So you're saying, because we already cut two hundred out of administration from the last one?
Yep.
Reduce staff and restructure department responsibilities from administration total. So this would be an increase of what we already cut to three hundred?
Three hundred thousand of administration. And any, and all I can tell you with the impact is going to be at this, well, it is all the way through. I would say, well, it's just bodies at this point.
And our lens, again, has to be, what are those things that we are required by the state to provide? So the curricular pieces, assessment, those kind of things are requirements by the state. Some of the things that we've worked really hard on to help support our teachers with the social emotional, which we are not funded by the state, happen to be the things around social emotional learning. So responsive classroom, developmental designs, web link, our student advocates, our school psychologists, behavior paras, those are all the things that we put in, into the system within the last year to help support the social emotional as much as the academic. The state requires us to have academic, we know that kids need social emotional, be able to access the academic, so from my perspective, they're equally important. But when push comes to shove, if that's, if you want a seven hundred and fifty thousand administrative, then we're going to be looking at not having two people at the front desk when people come into a school building. We're going to look at less tech support for our teachers, we're going to look at less support positions to get the work done, and it'll be all the way from communication to transportation, and you will see the impact. Days like today, instead of our transportation department taking care of it, you'll be getting the calls, and so will I. And, and then your answer will have to be, we understand, but we, we chose to not have those positions.
Thank you. Anyone else?
When you're ready, Chair. Ricky and Michael just crunched those numbers for us, so it doesn't have to be at the moment, but I have them here.
Excellent. I, I think what we'll do is proceed, and then we'll come back.
Just wanted you to know.
Thank you. And it would help even in the meanwhile, if we could get copies, that might even be better. Is there an easy way to do that?
I can try to do that.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, so we are on the fifth item, I believe, and it's to reduce elementary general paras allocation by three hours per building. One hundred thousand dollars.
I can speak to this one. Right now, at our elementary schools, we have a standardized model for allocation of all of our para support. And in that model right now, there is six hours that's added specifically for general ed para time. Anderson has three. We would reduce the, all of the buildings from six to three and leave Anderson at three, so they would all have three hours of general ed para.
Per day?
Per di, per day, and that's on, that does not, it doesn't touch there, we address safety types, things like lunchroom and playground, that's a separate allocation that is staffed separately.
Okay, so the ones that would be affected, you told me what wouldn't be affected?
The, the ones that are affected is, there are six hours of general ed para time that are allocated to the building for the principal to distribute as they need in their building. That part would be reduced to three hours.
Question, Pearson?
So what would be the impact? What, what is that para doing, those three hours, that wouldn't be there anymore? Or it's just different by building?
It's different by building. Some people use it in their media center. It's different by building. Some people use it in their media center, for example. Some of them will put extra supervision out at door. But every building has the choice of how they want to use that six hours.
Okay. Director.
Just quickly, this is after consult with the various principals of the buildings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Director Stivlin.
So, and then, so that's six hours that we currently have for general ed paras? Is that what you called it?
Correct.
So what, what other types of paras might we have in a building that would be above and beyond that? Or is that just all there is? Or can you explain, like, what portion of that is?
The majority of the para hours are special ed hours usually in the buildings. So the, the general ed budget hours is all supervision. And then this, there's an additional six hours that's allocated, so.
And that's, you said that's not for things like recess or cafeteria or something?
They may choose to use it as extra for that, but we allocate per building for those safety types of areas for paras.
Okay.
So there's minimum, minimum of safety precautions, and these would be in addition if that's how the principal decided to use that allocation.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. There are para hours dedicated right now for supervision out of the general, general education. What is that amount per, per building that there's supervision hours of para?
It depends on the building. So what we did is, the principals and I about five years ago, sat down and said, what's the minimum we need for playgrounds? What's the minimum we need for breakfast, for lunch? And depending on their building size, there's a range. So it's different by building, depending upon the size of your building, the type of playground. If it's a playground that has extra curves where you can't see, there might be an extra para there. So I can get that to you. I have, I just don't have it with me.
Okay. But do you know, like, a range, like a proximate or not off the top of your head?
I don't off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's just one of those questions, again, where it's hard to say how big of an impact if we were to make that cut. It's just kind of, would be helpful to sort of know what is the proportion of this cut compared to the total. So that's why it's, it would be helpful to kind of know, like, how many para hours are being spent in a typical building in other types of services, you know?
That's going to vary by the Roman size.
It's going to vary according to the size of the building, of course.
Yes.
Anything else on the para allocation? Going to number six, reduce budget for district technology. And I believe that amount is 240,000. Can you tell us what's in that roughly?
Well, it covers a variety.
It's an unpleasant task.
It covers a variety of things. It is really what we think we can take out of the, again, once again, it's what we think we can take out of the technology budget and still make the bare minimum happen.
You're looking at probably in part, and again, speaking off the cuff, possibly replacement. There might be a technology replacement that's on a cycle that you would be foregoing. Depending on, I don't know if it's capital or general, but I'm saying that's.
That's what I was wondering, too.
One particular, this isn't, the, the number that's listed, well, part of it is coming out of dues that we are currently paying. And then there's another part that might be subscription based, that we're just getting rid of whatever technology subscription. It isn't, at this time, it's not proposed that there would be staffing coming out of that 240. It would be coming through other channels, like I say, whether it's a subscription, our participation in things, that sort of concept.
Maybe devices, but we don't know.
Yeah, I'm thinking, the more I think about the devices, the more I'm thinking that's not the correct answer, that it's truly subscription and software and ties.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So the large portion is the, we, I want to say, spent about $200,000 on our exit from ties ownership this year. So that's a $200,000 hit that we took in the 18, 19 budget year. So it locks that in as a cut. So we've already had to account for that loss essentially in order to exit the ties organization. So the additional 40,000 in addition to that is mostly subscriptions. So we have certain tech and curriculum subscriptions for things that help augment some of the curriculum in the classroom. You need to know exactly what that number's going to be in order for me to tell you exactly what's going to be cut. But we have some, we use cyber safety education as required by SIPA, has a cost associated with it. There are free resources that we can move to, and we'll have to work on developing that curriculum. We have Learn 360 as a video streaming service that helps give teachers access to educational related visual media that can help augment lessons in the classroom. And then we've looked at some other more robust subscriptions like Storia and Study Island that have higher dollar figures, closer to the $20,000 figure that would help us get to the, the 240. Additionally, we've already cut back on pretty much all device replacements in the district. We're not currently funding device replacements for teachers, laptops, for student Chromebooks, or for whatever the display projection that teachers have in the classroom. They simply aren't funded. And so this eats in a little bit more to what our repair budget is. Because instead of keeping a laptop running for five years now, we, we're kind of in a place of an indefinite life cycle. We're not sure if it's a six-year, or seven-year, or an eight-year that a teacher's going to hold that device until some point in the future where we can identify funds to get those replacements rolling again. That's, that's kind of the story of, of how technology's run in the district for some years. Not being able to always replace teacher and student devices on a schedule because the funding hasn't been there. And we had some discussion with the board in 2016 when we gave the one-time allocation, that we were going to do a lot of work with the, the Wi-Fi and the internet and everything to really bring ourselves up to spec. But then we also made an investment of those funds into teacher and student devices because there isn't really any point in bringing all your infrastructure up to spec if you're not going to have devices for the teachers and students to use. And so that's bought us a lot of time, which is really helpful. It's about 2022, things start looking hairy again. And that's in terms of having enough student devices for testing and, and teachers having that regular reliable support that they can rely on using technology appropriately in their classrooms.
Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you.
So what I hear you saying is that this is sustainable to about 2022?
And then everything tanks.
Yeah, I, I would, I would.
That's huge.
We'll be, yeah, we'll be looking for how we can offset some of those concerns between now and 2022. I know that when you, when you hit 2022, we, we lose testing support on the majority of our Chromebook devices. So anything we can bring into the system annually between now and then really helps mitigate what that looks like in 2022. You know, there's a, there's kind of a minimum number of devices that a site needs depending on the grade levels that they're testing, just in order to facilitate your standard MCA testing. There's a whole different number that sites are looking for just to support their curriculum needs day to day. And so, you know, that curriculum need is, is definitely a higher number than that testing need. But of course, that testing need is where you get down to that nitty gritty conversation. If you're going to be a school district, you're going to complete your state mandated testing, and this is what's required to do that.
John, what I'm also concerned about is most times when people, regardless, laptops, any kind of computer, whatever, there's a normal lifetime. I think even generous would be five years. You're talking much longer than that.
Correct. So we've been trying to operate off a standard of replacing teacher laptops in five to six years and student Chromebooks in four to five.
Okay. So even 2022 really kind of stretches that.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair, if I could ask, just, we're going to be losing Dr. McDowell here in a few minutes. So if we could go down to the next section and just have him touch for you on the additional professional development and then the restructure of six, eight, gate.
Okay. Thank you.
It's John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Reduce additional professional development, 300. And notice all of these items. This is additional reduction options to reach the board's fund balance goal of 5%. Estimate total 1.88. The first item there is to reduce the additional professional development, 348,000.
That's correct. The, if you look at the initial sheet, our initial, the approved reduction was for 250,000 out of professional development. This is an additional 348,000. So what this does for us is it reduces us down to next year, supporting the remainder of the, really taking care of the literacy curriculum that we've put into place, any developmental designs that we can support, responsive classroom training that we need to support. But it takes us down to the bare bones of that professional development with what's left in the budget. It also allows us to continue with some of our buildings that have individual building needs, just depending upon where they're at in the progression of some of the different initiatives. So for example, the mindfulness, mindfulness programming, if there's an elementary that hasn't had as much training as another, that they may need more money. So the total of 588,000 is what we'd be taking out of professional development then, to keep us, try to keep us afloat to the sustainment piece. It's down, that takes us down to the level where we're just going to maintain for at least the next year with what we've got going on.
Okay. Director Pearson.
So what percentage does that put us at, then, for our, you know, I know we're required 2%. Where does that leave us?
Below 1. Well, in fairness, we achieve the 2% in absence of the professional development committee, advisory committee. You achieve 2% with your teacher development days. You have that regardless. What this does, though, is if you assume just over a million dollars in PD, you've made a cut of 250 already and you add another 348. That's where you're at.
And so that's true. I'm sorry.
So the 2% is okay, is what this?
We have the 2%, and then we still have some additional. Is it 1%? Another 1%? Or?
It essentially is another 500,000 dollars.
And the 2% is a requirement by the state.
Right. Under statute, they require you to set aside 2%.
And then this is something that principals felt they could live with?
Yeah, I would say, I think it depends upon who you ask and what they're trying to pull off. I think what, I would, I would word it this way. It's what we came, it's what we've come to consensus that we can, again, make, keep things going as we have right now, not take on anything new in terms of, of training up new stuff. But like I said, any teachers that we need to get up to speed with responsive classroom, it allows money for that. Any middle school teachers that we need to get up to speed for developmental designs, it allows us to do that. Our literacy training, it allows, it allows us to do that. And I know, Rach, am I missing anything? Yeah, I think those were the big ones, pretty much. So we're at, we're at the point where we can, please don't ask me to cut any more out of PD.
Well, and, and recognize, this is a painful process. So thank you. Director Pearson.
Thank you. So that 500,000 is the instructional coaches? Is that what that is covering?
That includes, so it does, it allows us to keep the, it leaves enough for us to keep the four instructional, or the three instructional coaches right now out of there. And that is part of the sustainment process. Because if we cut the professional development this much, if we can leave that instructional coaching system and process in place, we can support teachers the rest of the way with those instructional coaches that we already have.
Okay. So the question I have, in what's proposed on the paper here, 348,000, that does not cut any instructional coaches?
We, I would, with the money that's left in professional development, I would not reduce those instructional coaching positions. I would.
That's what I wanted to know. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, let's go to eliminate paying for ACT, 41,000. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, and we can do those both. They're both, so, well, maybe I'll start with restructuring gate six, eight, just so we get through that. So once again, this doesn't, it doesn't impact four, five gate, the, the self-contained gate program. The FTE that we currently have set aside right now for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade is to, is to support the students that have come out of the five, four, five program and are now in the middle school as sixth, seventh, or eighth grade students. So there isn't that self-contained. Our idea behind this move is we would read, right now, we have two FTE set aside to support this at Stillwater Middle, is what we have. We would reduce that to one person, and we would take that one person and put that person across Oakland Middle School and Stillwater Middle School, so that we would be able to have those sixth, seventh, and eighth programs monitored and maintained equally between the two middle schools. That was what we had discussed with the middle school principals. I don't know if I've missed anything on that, Kathy or Andy. But that's the idea behind that shift. Again, to the sustainable question, probably not sustainable over time. We're going to have to look at retooling it. But it's a way to reduce some without eliminating the support altogether.
And where would you like to go next?
Can I just ask a question about that?
Oh, I'm sure.
So are you talking about, so that, that 72,000, that's cutting a staff person who is currently at Stillwater Middle only?
It's, it's cutting one of two FTE for that, that we have in place to support that.
So we have, we currently have two FTE servicing only six through eight at Stillwater Middle only?
Because that's where gate, that's where the gate program is.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we would be cutting that down to one FTE, and then that person would be split between both buildings instead of just that Stillwater Middle?
And we'd run kind of an embedded model between the two so that, try to ramp teachers up. Again, in all of it, it's imperfect, but it's one of those, how do we make a reduction and keep what we have left going? Not hit the four, five program.
How does that change the program? What changes?
Specifically, I'd have to ask Eric and Andy, Principal Fields, Principal Van Scoy, what exactly they would be thinking in terms of that. From an operational standpoint, what I can tell you is we've logistically said we could, or figured out, this is about the least we could do if we were going to do that. Specific changes, I would envision, unless there's a different thing, is that one person would, I don't want to use the term, the title coordinator, but I'll use the term coordinator, in, in that that person would be responsible for coordinating a, the six, seven, and eight support between those two middle schools as those students who were gate students are going through their sixth, seventh, and eighth grade programming.
So is this, are these two people right now teaching gate courses?
Yes, and. We have a little unique situation at Stillwater Middle just because of the way science has gone this year. But the idea was that they would be doing some teaching originally and providing push-in support for classrooms. So they'd be, they were, the idea was originally that part of this FT was going to be in that coordinator type role anyway, to help multiple teachers provide additional support for those gifted students as they went through to eighth grade.
Any other questions? Seeing none, where would you like to go next?
I'll just touch on that eliminating the ACT. The ACT, it's about $41,000 for us to offer that ACT. And so just to remind people with ACT programming, the state requires us to offer it to 11th graders. Originally, when this was put into place, the state also paid for all the 11th graders to take it. That happened one year. And then the, the reimbursement was taken away. And so now we're paying for that, for all of our 11th graders to take that ACT test. We would still offer the ACT test. We just wouldn't pay for everybody to take the ACT test as we do now.
Okay.
Sorry, lots of questions. Do you know what the cost is per test? Is this one like $65?
Yeah.
I want to say it's 60 something.
Yeah, like 63 or 65, something like that.
Would be a good thing to ask the state.
Right. But that, that one's pretty cut and dry. That's really all that, that one's about.
Director. I think it was mentioned, what, what kind of resources are available for students who maybe don't have the means to pay for the test?
Right. Our assistant principals were sharing with us that if a student wants to take the test and has any financial constraints, that they work with their counselors and they take care of it that way. There's, I don't want to call it angel fund. I don't know what the exact term is, but kids won't be denied access to be able to take that test. That's been something that's been there for a while. They also reminded me that, you know, the state paid for ACT for one year, thinking that it would encourage more people to take it. And what the principals had shared with us is they didn't really see that lofty goal, goal being, you know, kids would take it because they more or less had to. But they didn't really realize the hope that the state had, that, you know, kids would take it and really think differently about what their future might be based on the results. So for one year, the state paid for it for us. So everybody got used to that. And then it came back to the districts again. So we haven't, we traditionally haven't paid for it. Then the state paid for it. it. Then the state paid for it for a year. Our families, we wanted to try to keep that going for them, but it is something that in the past we haven't. The other thing I was going to make a comment on is before the reconfigurations of schools, we didn't have formal support for seventh and eighth grade. We did that because of where we moved the gate program and were able to do that at that time. But Principal Fields has been supporting the gate programming at his building without that support because we still have gifted students there that just haven't chose to be in the, you know, gate space over at Stillwater Middle.
Okay. So that brings up another question. So will they then be working with all gifted and talented identified students or just with the students that came out of the gate program?
Well, I imagine, and, and now I see Andy stepped out. We can have, talk to him when he comes back. But I'm sure with all gate students because the, I mean, that's what Andy's doing right now. And a lot of it is even with the course choices and placements. And when, when Bob talks about that coordination piece, it's working with our teachers to say, okay, what are your students that need extra challenge? And so it's a kind of both and?
Okay. Others? And are we down to increase six, twelve staffing ratio?
I think reduce elementary specialists.
Or reduce elementary specialist minutes?
So I can speak to this one. When we added art and media, we had looked at and made some changes at the same time and increased our FIA Ed from thirty minutes to forty minutes. What this line item is, is give, taking us back to the thirty minutes. In a teacher's day, there's three hundred and thirty instructional minutes. That means that they could teach eleven in a day. Currently, they teach eight. So that allows you to reduce the staff. What we did in this model is, because we've had conversations with our specialists about not having time between class and transitions and some things, time to take a restroom break, for example. So what we did is costed out a model that would be eleven classes per day, but the teachers teach ten of eleven. So that would, if a good thing can come out of a not great thing, it kind of gives us that extra period in the day. They're teaching more per day and, but they have, or some time during that day where we actually have some flexibility in their schedules.
And so Kathy, would it be fair to say then, is this going to directly affect art, media, and FIA Ed?
Um, yes, they will all go to thirty minutes.
And the present amount?
It's forty for all.
Thank you. Director Weisberg.
So that would be a reduction in staff?
Yes.
Okay. Director Berg. Sorry, I could, could you just explain that, you dropping eleven to eight one more time?
So right now, in, because we have a forty minute period for specialists, which is our prep coverage. Those forty minutes are the teachers' prep periods. A teacher can only teach eight core classes in a day, eight sections of kids. If you reduce the minutes to thirty, they can teach eleven in a day.
So forty minutes times eight sections is three twenty. They have three hundred and thirty minutes they can teach. If we reduce the minutes to thirty, then they can do more shorter classes and give, but if they don't teach all of them, then they can space out and have a little bit of time in between to help with some of the, it's, it's tough for our teachers who are specialists who get one group after another. And if they don't have a little break in there, that's something that we've been, in fact, we're going to be talking with our QSC group about how we can help with that. And so this is one, you know, like Kathy said, if you have to find a positive out of it, it's helpful.
Now, an impact too that it's going to have is that if I'm a teacher and I got thirty minutes, I'm saying I walk in, I take attendance, all those necessary kind of things that you do. But also in terms of the impact of a class is reduced from forty to thirty minutes?
Correct.
So I mean, to me, to my world, this impacts learning definitely. Mark, further question?
No, I got it.
Director Pearson.
Sorry, I feel like I'm asking lots of questions. But does this, do they have gym twice a week? Is that, and so that stays the same?
Twice in a six-day rotation.
So some weeks it's only one?
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg.
Yep, depending on which week, the way the week rolls.
Other questions, comments? The last one on the list, I believe, is increase six, twelve staffing ratio by one for potential savings of four hundred and six thousand dollars. Question?
And that's also reducing staff, correct?
Correct.
Other questions, comments?
I have a question. Can you, Kristen, can you tell us, what is the budget assumption for what we're, what's in the budget assumptions for what we're going to get from the state in terms of increases this year?
Two percent.
Two percent.
Two percent, Janet.
Okay, thank you.
It seems to me we've got approximately an hour and twenty minutes left. We, we can go over, but I'm not sure that's, that's desirable. What I'd like to do is this, almost single out any item that you cannot support because of information, that you want more specificity than what's been offered. And, and if that comes in, and my point is, even if you tell us that, we'll take counts, but even if you tell us that, then it may still pass as an area to be cut, or not to be cut, one of those two. But I'm saying, and what I want to do is, what I'm looking for in both sections is commonality, where at least the majority of the board, which in this case is four, says, yes, that's an area to go for. And it would give direction if, for example, there was a three-three, then we might revisit that at another occasion and we could talk about the specificity that would be needed and provide that as a direction. Now, that's one way we can go. I don't know if somebody else has got a, a better idea. Director Pelletier?
Not that I have a better idea, but I, I just want to also make the note that, you know, it is possible to, to avoid these dramatic cuts and dip into the fund balance. I know we, no one wants to do that, of course, but I just have to make the, the statement, we've, we've done it in the past. And I'm very concerned about the professional development. Our teachers are taking major cuts and it is of grave concern to me. So it's disappointing. So I, I just want to make sure that, you know, we are, remember that, that is a possibility as well.
Thank you. Others?
Just a note to clarify for Director Pelletier, the, the first, the top section, if the board would accomplish that or some combination of that, you might take something from the bottom and put it up there or switch things around. But if you would accomplish that, then you aren't, you don't have to worry about dipping further into the fund balance, your balance for next year.
We are balanced.
So it would just mean that you aren't building back up the fund balance.
So that makes me feel marginally better.
You aren't increasing your savings account.
A little tiny bit better.
Right. Because I agree, and I don't think we're going to get to where we get all the way back up. And I think the fund balance is there for that reason, but I don't know how long it's been since we got this far down. And I don't think we want to go any further down. And there's so much fluctuation in what could change that I think we've got to hit, we might not hit all of it to get us up to the five, but I think we've got to try to hit so that we're building back up somewhat.
Yeah. And also keep in mind, if you're pessimist, you say, golly, two percent from the state or three percent for the state, how likely is that? But those are wild cards that are still out there. Okay. Any other comments?
You know, just, just one, one comment. When we're, the numbers that we're looking at here, and maybe Director Hojazal, you, you mentioned at the beginning, but this does not take into account the one hundred thousand dollar difference that was voted into yesterday. Is that correct?
So the reduction of the leases, in total, we have a hundred thousand dollars or in play, we have a hundred thousand dollars of cell phone leases. What was reduced last night was approximately seventy. It does, so, so the reduction, as far as the forecast that was presented on January eleventh, no, of course, it would not take that into account. Absolutely. So that would be in addition to, again, like I said, there's other things I see, as I typically do. There's been a lot of changes, even something with the special ed formula that appears to be in our favor. As much as it doesn't feel this way, and I sure as heck wouldn't advocate for it to a degree, the weather-related days are in our favor. In part, we're not transporting students those days. It's not a good thing academically, it's not a good thing for, I mean, there's nothing about it that's good. So that is the one silver lining, is that there is a little bit of savings there. And so that's why I always, and, and until, until people have experienced essentially the budget cycle for, maybe it takes as long as I've been doing it, to understand that, again, it's a point in time. We have been flow. At the end of the day, I would say, we've been pretty reliable. I mean, there might be areas that it's like, whoa, you really missed the mark on that to the bad. And then it's, you know, there's something else that crosses over. And so I'm cautious. Yes, it was a, a true reduction in our revenue. That's a real thing. I'm cautious to take something in isolation because there's everything else that's happening as well. And to quantify and try to keep up with a budget on a day-to-day basis would be impossible. It's a reduction, it would be a reduction from the numbers. I'm inclined to believe that there's going to be other things that could happen that might help. And so I think the best effort that we have today is the numbers that were presented on the eleventh, until something else happens, knowing in the back of your mind that that was a purposeful revenue reduction.
Okay. Thank you.
So how I would like to proceed at this point is I'm going to go down each one of those. And all I want you to do, you don't have to defend or anything, if you're saying, I need more specificity to support it, if that's the issue, just let us know. And then when we're all done with the whole list and, and we've decided where we do have commonalities, that those cuts would be in those areas, we'll come back, pick those up. Director Weisberg.
So then we're just saying, I could consider this one, but are, is that what we're saying?
I don't have enough information to make a decision on this one, to support it.
So then we're not saying things we aren't willing to consider?
No.
Okay.
Because I'm saying like, for example, number one, we got some additional information on, on athletic, for example. And I'm saying, okay, I haven't had time to study that yet. I would, maybe next time around or another time, I would support that. But that's what's keeping me right now is I haven't had the specificity to make a decision. Does that make sense?
So is it just where we want additional information?
Yes.
And then the next step is that we'll vote at an upcoming meeting, that this list will come to us? Is that the expectation?
We could do that. Or I think the way we did it last time was a thumbs up and a thumbs down.
Yeah. Just a reminder that our staffing, when we first started looking at the whole budget process, we were shooting for December. And our budget, our staffing starts, the process starts on Wednesday. So we can't, staff members and your principals out here are waiting to get those numbers. So we can, if there's something you need, let us know because we can turn it on.
Let me go here and then I'll go.
Well, I was just going to, I, I thought we could not make decisions in working session. So is that accurate or is that inaccurate?
You'll make the full, you'll bring it to the board. So you just have the discussion now and then say, likely, these are things we'd like. And then you'd bring it to the board meeting on the twenty-first.
To confirm.
Right.
This is, this is a field. Okay?
Chair Patacik, I just wanted to, just to follow up. The question about the para-hours, when you had asked me what the ranges are, I pulled up my spreadsheet. So the, the hours per building range with Anderson at seven point eight-three, which we will not be touching there already at three hours. The highest building that we have is Rutherford that has twenty-one point eight-three hours. And that includes cafeteria, breakfast supervision, cafeteria lunch supervision, hallway supervision, playground supervision, plus the general ed. So it would be three hours out of that. Your, your supervision hours are not touched. It'd be that extra six hours.
Thank you.
Can I give you one more piece?
Please.
In answer to your question, Liz, you had asked earlier about the legal, not a three oh five, so it is not in the consulting?
It's a three oh seven. It's a consultant. It's just not listed on the list you were provided.
So would there be a way to see what we do pay? And I'm just curious, just for example, in the policy group, I think the, the, the way it works now is that things go to legal, then they come back to policy, then they go back to legal. And so I'm just wondering, just in small things like that, if we just reduced things like that, what that would do to our legal fees? If we only, if we, if policy committee handled it, then sent it to legal, so reduce that by half. I mean, things like that can make a big difference. So maybe if we could see what we do pay, there could be efficiencies there also.
Are you looking for total, what we pay or what we, because the rate, we have a two, what, if it's the Kennedy Graven where we use for the policy group, it's a two hundred dollar an hour rate. It depends on if it's special ed, we use a different legal counsel for those pieces. But is that what you're asking, what, how much we pay?
That would be helpful.
Yep. Are, are you looking?
It would definitely be something that wouldn't affect classrooms, but that we could find ways to save money, I, I think.
Yeah. I understand what you say, are saying, Liz, and I, I agree with you. I mean, I think there are a number of things we could do to reduce our legal expenses in this district. I think that process, you're, I guess the best way to explain it is, it is what it is, your legal expenses. We can't predict how many FOIA requests we're going to get. We have, you know, thousands of pages that our, our lawyers have to go through. We can't predict how many staff concerns that we need to work through. And many times, those, those things are unexpected and expensive. So I think ways that you're talking about to try do that, we certainly can, but they're pretty minimal. I think that's the hardest thing for you as a board is, you know, to have big numbers. Unfortunately, it's not the little things that add up to enough. But certainly, your group can look at that and look at the procedure and reduce it.
I think being frugal is a good idea.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me. I, I think being frugal is a, is a really good idea. And if we're going to look at legal expenses, we have to include all of the FOIAs and, you know, meetings and whatnot with attorneys. So I, I think we should be more comprehensive in that, you know. And I, I agree, let's take a look at those legal fees if we're going to do that. So that's a good point.
Director Weisberg.
I, I understand that there are certain things we can't do anything about, that that's what the bill is going to be. But and then since like I'm talking about in the policy group, a friend of mine, the same thing happened. They had their attorneys sitting in at all their meetings and they thought, why are we doing this? I mean, two hundred dollars an hour adds up quick. So if there are instances like that where we could say, okay, we don't have to do it twice, or we don't have to have them sit in, or we don't have to send them this, that's what I'm talking about.
Yep. Makes sense.
Okay. Let's go to the items. And again, give me an indication if specificity or more information. Increase high school athletic fees. Anyone feel they need additional information? Shift middle school athletics to community education?
Can I just say, we, we did get the sheet. We didn't really discuss it, that the, if we increase the high school athletic fees by five percent, we got this list from Ricky that says it would save us fourteen thousand dollars. If we increase them by ten percent, it would save us twenty-eight something, twenty-eight thousand approximately. So it's something.
Okay.
Chair Patacik, just for a point of reference, there was a survey that came through, and I don't know if the new board members also have that survey, when considering what the athletic director and the coaches and activity directors surveyed and recommended, and then the increase in, but just a flat percentage.
Yep.
I think they got that with.
Yep, we got it.
Today.
They gave it to us. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. So the second one is to shift middle school athletics to community education? Anyone need more information?
I would like to know what the cost would be if, for each athletic activity, if we didn't subsidize.
Okay. So you're asking for more information. Okay. And again, what I'm saying is it still may, when the item comes up, the indication may carry a majority or may not. We'll see. Reduce?
We talked about finding out what it would cost to increase the fees to cover the, that amount instead of going through the expense of trying to transfer it over. You have a note?
I get it.
And that will, so two things. One, the increase, like you said, Sarah, and then the hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we're kind of off, budget versus revenue, we'll just find out and work with Annette and, to find out how many participants and then you divide it. So it's an easy number to get you.
Okay, great.
Okay. Reduce custodial staff by four point six-five FTE. Further reduce administrative costs. It's presently a hundred thousand. Further reduce administrative costs, it's presently 100,000.
I'd like for that to be increased, so I don't know if I'm saying this at the right time or not.
When we get to it, we'll, we'll talk that part. Reduce elementary general para allocation by three hours per building. Number six, reduce budget for district technology, 240,000. Going further, seven, reduce additional professional development, 348,000. Number eight, eliminate paying for ACT, 41,000. Number nine, restructure 6-8 gate, 72,000. Reduce elementary specialist minutes, 259,000. And then last but not least, increase 6-12 staffing ratio by one. Okay? All right, let's do this then, and again, this is just advisory to give some indication when we get to a regular board meeting, we turn it into a formal vote. Increase high school athletic fees, so if you say yes, or a thumbs up, what we're indicating is, you would support that cut, okay?
But not as it's listed.
I think we start off with as it's listed, if somebody wants to make a different proposal, do so.
Well, this, this 48,000, I think, if I'm correct, is this original list that Ricky and Michael shared with us, and then we already went through this quite comprehensively, and took out at a previous meeting which ones we were not okay with. They're crossed out at the bottom of this page.
Okay.
But it's still not all of this, because?
There is a net result, because when you're looking at it, you have in the middle of it, number nine, you have $10,000, which is the increase in fees, and then you see the eliminate supply, which is actually the deduction of that. And so your net effect is the 2250. Again, it doesn't get you to the 48. We eliminated, at the time, the board discussion was also elimination of number four. Like I had said, it was the service involvement, and there just wasn't a good deal for that. And then it was, the heck, if we're going to have Ricky pay for his own mileage, we don't care what Ricky wants, that was number 10.
Right.
And then I'm still coming up with about 3850 difference, but those was, that was everything in totality of what the board discussed.
Okay, so, the amount would be what, roughly?
So, but, well, I guess what I was trying to get at is, that was what the, this is where the 48,000 came from. What I would like to consider is the 10% increase in fees that he just gave us, that would get us to 28,000. And then we don't have all this complicated, this whole thing, which we already voted on, and, and it didn't pass. So, this is something new that we just considered, and if we did the 10% increase, it would get us to 28, approximately 28,000. That's what I would like to propose.
Director Kirsten.
Which, I think we could talk about that, but I think, one, it was a different board, so we're a different board looking at this. But two, we have the survey from the coaches, and I'd rather go, I think, rather hit that closer to what they said they could live with than just do something that doesn't hit as much, but is different from what they had said. That's just my.
So are you saying you just want to take more time and maybe?
Well, I'd rather just take the list that we went through, and that the coaches had said they would.
Okay.
That they could do, eliminating the four and the 10.
How about if we do this, just set that one aside for now?
Yeah.
As one we don't have.
I don't want to do it now.
Okay. Let's go to number two, shift middle school athletics to community education, 170,000.
To our thumbs up?
Thumbs up means you support that?
I think we need more information on this one. I think, I mean, I don't know. I think we do.
That's what you just asked for, right, Sarah?
Yeah.
You want, yes.
Yeah.
We can, and we can turn that around quickly.
Yeah.
So I think we can leave it on the list for now, and then?
Yeah, yeah.
Leave it on the list to be cut?
Discuss.
Well, just further information is needed.
Right.
Okay, all right. Not finding much.
Is there anything I just want to clarify? Because you, you're just digging, and you're digging into this, you're having lots of good conversation. You might say you want that list, or you want that list and a couple, and, and what Tina just, you know, brought up with the 28,000, maybe a combination? So, you can have some time to think about that, you have time to vote. So I'm just wondering if, letting us know if there's specific things that you want.
That's what I want.
And I'll, we'll get that to you. You can each look at it individually, and then if you have any questions, we can, you know?
Director Burns.
I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, we, we've spent time here today, and it's precious time that we're spending, and we want to get direction for the administration. I'm, I'm wondering if some of these items where we're looking at needing a little bit more information to get to a point where we can confidently say yes or no, but still, if we're, I mean, can we put these items that we think, if we can get the information, we can put on the agenda for the, the meeting to have an up or down vote?
And I think that's what Denise is proposing.
Okay, all right.
But thank you for clarifying.
Right, because I would say if we need more information, it is a possible cut, right?
Yes.
So we need to leave it on the list.
Yes. That's what I think, too.
Okay.
And, and we can get some direction today, but then we can, we'll make our final decision at the next meeting. It'll be an agenda item.
We'll see if we got anything that doesn't.
Yeah, okay.
Reduce custodial staff by 4.65 FTE.
So, can I just ask, this is literally the only difference this would make, is that instead of cleaning classrooms every day, they would clean every other day, and no other changes besides that? Is that right?
Probably like, what do we talk about, a Monday, Wednesday, Friday? Or we talk, I mean, there's different ways you can do it. You can do, you know, it might be where they clean, you're going to have to clean the cafeteria every day, right?
You got to scrub the toilets, I mean, there's bacteria.
There are things, those things we'll make sure and do. But, yep, classrooms will have to do some picking up, and, you know, it'll be not vacuumed every day.
I, I get a little bit apprehensive when it's, this is all that it's going to impact, because quite honestly, that's not how a day rolls.
Yeah.
And so I'm.
That's more of an IE.
Well, I guess I'm trying to get.
Yeah, that's, that's like, the best estimate of what the impact will be. However, you know, there's situations that alter everything every day. Like, when I look, and your question was, where are we with FTE? We're at 57.65. So you're dropping that down, you know, just?
57, so it's, this is a 10%.
Approximately. And so just to say, well, we're just not going to empty and vacuum? Hmm, and depends on the building, depends on the size, depends on if there's a custodian app, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot, so I just, Sarah, I'm, I hope you understand why I'm apprehensive.
That's helpful. The 57 FTE, that's helpful. I'm just trying to get a sense of how big of a scope is that?
Yep.
You know? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, could we have a thumbs up or a thumbs down on this item, please? All those in favor, thumbs up? We all like a clean house.
I say make the kids vacuum.
That's what I was going to say, vacuum in every room, and then?
And then you have a union issue. And then you have a union issue.
As a reward, when the kids are done first, they clean.
Kathy, maybe you're in position to, to see everybody and just informally?
Oh, how many people?
Okay, how many thumbs up do we have on this one?
We have seven.
Four, five, six, seven.
Yes, seven.
You have seven thumbs.
Further reduce administrative cost, at present, it's 100,000, proposed?
I propose 750, which I did last time.
Okay.
Can I just make a, or a question, I guess, on that? When you say the number 750, does that mean, so there's already been agreed upon with the previous board, 200?
Yeah.
And then this is a proposed 100?
Total 750.
Yeah, so total of 750, okay.
So this would be 550 on this?
Which would basically be half of what the increases have been in four years.
Okay. Is there a thumbs, now, just state what number we're going to be voting on?
Total 750 for.
550,000 on this page.
That's what I thought, but I just want to make sure, okay? All those in favor, thumbs up, please?
Just one?
Okay.
Can I propose 250?
Okay.
Instead of 100. So we, we've already cut, we've already cut 200.
Okay, so you're proposing?
250.
An additional 250?
An additional 250.
Okay, all those in?
And actually, what I'm, what I'm proposing is, I really need more information about what that would look like. And I think Bob suggested that earlier, that maybe we haven't had enough of a conversation about exactly what's going on in, in administration, where are all these expenses going to? We have had some information, which has been helpful, but I think it would be better to have even more. So what would that look like? You know, what, how, what different ways might we be able to get to that? You know, if we could get a picture, what 250 additional cuts to administration looks like? It would be helpful for us to know what we'd actually be voting on.
Kathy?
Chair Patachuk, I'm wondering, as far as staffing, I'm just thinking staffing and getting people notified, is it possible to do the 100, and then add another line for an additional one, so that this one goes through, if that's what's going to happen, and then we add the 150 as another line with your other ideas?
So, it would say 100 for sure, and then 150 would be a variable we deal?
I, I, yeah, I would be okay with that, except that I'm also, now that I'm thinking about it, we vote, we already voted on 200 in the last round of cuts. I don't even really know what that's impact has been. So it would be really good to know exactly what are we voting on, you know? Not just a number, but what is the impact?
Yeah, I think some of our struggle is that you're going to have positions with names attached to them.
I understand that, yeah.
And, and you're having a work session, which is public, and then those people are, that's a difficulty.
Could we talk about it without names? Is there any way to do that without being that specific?
Well, that's what we've tried to do by saying a coordinator, a director, a tech person. I mean, we can, what we could do is for that additional, I mean, it'll be a combination, right? And we can put number of positions for you. We can say, you know, this is going to be two tech positions, a coordinator, you know, we can do that. Each time you go deeper, it, we have to look at, how do we restructure? And what I was trying to help share, which I'm evidently not doing a very good job of, is, you know, there are, there are increases, everybody has contractual increases, right? And I understand that you see those numbers and they go up. That's a contract, and we've shared with you many times that our administrators, and that doesn't matter if you're, you know, clerical assistant, or if you're me, those numbers are at average or just below average. And so, you know, it's not that we're paying people too much money, when you look at the market across the metropolitan area. The other thing I was trying to share is the increases that we've had. I know when you look at that sheet, it looks like a lot of positions, but we have a lot of different programming than we did four years ago. We have the whole PAC, which is a number of positions. We run that thing day and night. We have, you know, so.
But isn't that coming out of community ed?
Right, so that's my point, is, when you look at that sheet, you see, oh wow, we have 14 new positions out of community ed, out of special ed. But what you're asking us to cut is administration that's not in those areas. Because, you know, we're looking at to get the general fund here, we aren't looking to change the community ed budget, or special education, that, those are funds that are, you know, we have to keep over here in separate buckets, right?
Right.
So we're cutting deep into this general fund budget, where the additions actually aren't, haven't been. The, the, you know, one position for the coordinator position that we added back when I came, that was an additional to the teaching and learning that the school board at that time recognized was a need. So, there is, I mean, we're trying, it is complex.
Yeah, but you can't deny, there have been some significant salary increases over the past four years, that do also make up for that. And maybe that was just getting people to average for the Twin Cities, but now we're at a level where, in our current financial situation, we can't sustain. I mean, we, we have to cut somewhere, you know?
Right, so we'll cut people and positions, and we can do that. Just know that we're, we'll come, with that, whatever you come back with, we will come back with, and just, you know, there, when we talk about staff, you know, it's everybody, it's people in this room, it's, there's no one person in this district that's any more important than the other. And I know you all feel that way, but I've talked to you before about it, it takes everybody to make this, this system work. And so, that's where, you know, I ask for you to have some trust in that we are trying to give you things that we see will not impact the system terribly for a year, based on your principals and your directors giving us feedback, what this might look like, so.
So it seems to me that, here's what, what's altered, is that we would vote on 100,000, and then we would put aside the 150 for further consideration? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay?
And, and if we could get some way to see what that actually is looking like, what, what, wait, what have we already cut? What are we going to be cutting with the additional 150? What does that look like?
Okay, let's do the 100,000 first, if you support that. Could we have a thumbs up, please? That part carries. Then if we, yeah. Then if we want to go with the additional 150 for consideration, and for an explanation of the present positions, what does that involve? Okay? I don't think we even have to vote in this second part, we'll just do that for information.
Okay.
Okay. All right, then, reduce elementary general para allocation by three hours per building? Are you prepared?
Doing thumbs up, thumbs down?
Thumbs up or thumbs down? What do we got for Colin?
Five, two.
Five, two, okay, thank you. Reduce budget for district technology, 240,000. That one seems unanimous. Reduce additional professional development to 348,000. Six, one. Eliminate paying for ACT. That one is six, one. Restructure 6-8 gate. I think that's universally opposed, if I can see everybody right. Reduce elementary specialist minutes? I think that one did not carry unanimously. Increase 6-12 staff ratio by one. Looks like it was a no as, as well. Kristin, can you give me a running total?
I sure can. You are looking at 1.2, I think, 1.2?
That we saved, or cut?
No, you didn't do that, that you're looking at for cuts on the 21st. You did nothing, you're looking for.
I am a no.
He did nothing.
He did not do anything. All that work.
How much did we, how much did we cut?
1.1, you're, you're still evaluating 1.197 with a question, that's what's on the list, with a question of another 150, which would bring, 1.197? Well, which would bring you 1.2 and whatever, just over 1.2.
I, I just have a general question about process, you know, because I'm, I'm not sure with the thumbs up and, last time we did this, we did, you know, we've done the dots and, and whatnot, and knowing that this isn't a full vote. So I guess where I'm at is, are the thumbs up, you know, yea or nay, or question marks, or whatever, whatever, what have you? I am a little bit confused what our thumbs are doing at this moment in time.
Nothing.
That's, in essence, that's the truth, yeah. It just tells us if we got to dig deeper, got to work harder.
Well, if we're willing to have them bring it to us, and then we'll vote, like we did before, but.
But that will formalize whatever.
And if you?
And you have a right to change your mind.
If after evaluation of the additional administration, it would be 1.347.
Well, and I want to be clear, I don't think we took the first two off the list, we just want more information.
That's what I'm saying, you really didn't do anything when you were looking at a running total of what are we going, coming back with on the 21st to discuss and have action on?
Right.
It's actually the 1.197. You will get additional information on administration, I don't know if you'll act on it that night or not.
So are those two, top two included in that number you just gave?
Yeah, I have, what I have listed is everything in the top section plus 150 that is still yet to be discussed, but 100 will be acted on with more information on 150. And then the first two in the second section, as far as you are, it's still on the table for consideration.
And keep in mind, as, and, and your question's a very good one, you can change your mind on any of this. This was just at best an estimation. Director Riley.
Denise, what do you have coming back for us for the community education, the shift from the middle school? I'm just curious to know.
When I wrote down for the middle school athletics, it was to find out how much it would cost if we kept it where it is, but just increase the cost to pay for the deficit. And then what might that look like if we transferred it to community ed? Because there'd be the initial cost, but we'd have to keep up with it somehow.
Could we get something kind of like what Ricky gave?
That's just another, it would be another column for me to add in the spreadsheet, so it's relatively available. I should have that out to you early part of October.
Okay, okay. And then Ricky already gave us the five and 10%, so you're good with that?
Okay.
Okay. Other questions, comments?
At this point, can we add things that aren't on the list that we had talked about before or?
If you want to mention anything, please do.
Well, one of the things, I mean, I know this is our consultant list and we said that this doesn't include legal or financial advisors, so.
Liz, can I ask, what are you, I don't know, there's only one fee and that's a mandate requirement from the financial advisor? So I'm not quite sure what else you mean.
Okay, I just was curious if it was on here or no.
No, it's not, but what I'm saying is the only fee that we've paid is a legal reporting fee that needs to be done annually. So, and it's just, I want to say it's between a thousand and $1,200.
Okay, so then if we could get more information on if there are ways that we could maybe save on our legal bills? I would like that.
Um, you know, I I'm try, maybe.
Or would it be easier if we just said more broadly consultants? Because I know one of the reasons why we have this list is because we have raised the question of, you know, whether it's possible to reduce in the consultant avenue?
So that's, that's kind of the conversation. So let me, for the Director Weisberg's question first. I think that is a good idea and I'm wondering if, when we think about the process, if it'd be something that we'd want to bring to you as the finance group and sit down and look at what are all those different costs? And then, you know, Kathy is going to be one of the best people to look at, okay, here's the process. Because in the past, I mean, we've always tried to limit legal fees, right? I mean, it's something where you, we need them to review things so that we don't get in trouble down the line, sorry. My sister's a lawyer too. But we try to limit that always, right? And so what might be helpful is to sit down and look at that process because going forward, then you can say, all right, this is a place where we might do it. So we're happy to do that and dig into that with you. I don't know that that, that might take you a little bit more time than we can do by the 21st, but I think that's a great idea. And then Sarah, you had asked.
Just more broadly, the consultants, just, you know, this is what, 1.7, I mean, all told? And a lot of this is stuff we have to have, obviously, but.
Right, so I guess our question is, if you want to look through this, kind of like we do with the disbursement, and if there are questions that you have, you know, we've given you some examples from the benefits administration mostly about for those are, those bigger consulting items that we don't have people for because we do that. But as you look through the district operations or any of the programming things and have specific questions about what that is, we're happy to answer those, just need to know the specifics. And then also to know that with the staff training, for many of those, those will be reduced and not paid because they are part of our professional learning. But also remember that even if you cut and you went to the staff training, let's say you just said we aren't going to do any more professional development and staff training. That doesn't mean that when you look at the bottom total for 175,000, you're going to save that because you've already cut it through professional development. So this is just showing you how much we paid the consultants, but they've already been paid as part of the professional development budget. Does that make sense?
Yes. Director Pearson.
Okay, two questions. First, is it possible to add a column to this to say what it's for? You know, whether it was for a classroom or, you know, you know, like Emma Davis, was it, was she, what was it for?
I can actually, I actually have, this is the detailed report of every single expense in there, who it was cut for and what, what the description of the reason of it was for, that is.
So I have asked, so could we have that, if that would be available? I know that's, we've done that before with a line item, if that could be available at Barb's desk or something that we could stop in and look at that? That would be great. And then my second, because I would appreciate looking at this, because I know we're looking at the long range facilities plan and do we want to bring in an outside consultant? And we sure can't do that to add on to what we're already spending. So how can we, if we're going to do that, what needs to adjust in here so that we're not spending more? That's kind of that, one of those things that isn't clear.
Well, and that's a great point too, because I know there was conversation at a different meeting as far as are we looking at a survey? And, you know, whereas that kind of, there are budgetary items that are still out there that conceptually have been talked about that would, back to alter what's in front of us at the end of the day. That if you know in advance, that'd be great, if you don't, we catch it in the revised, because again, it's a budget, but just if you know there's things that you want done.
Right.
And again, each of those items, there's some pros and cons to that. I mean, let's face it, if you screw up legally, you can pay some big, big bucks on that.
Thank you, Chair. If we're adding on, can we add on board development costs too, just so we can have another look at that? I think the previous board, we looked at it, but I'd like to add that and just have a second, second look opportunity.
For savings or what?
Um, for cuts.
And could we, I'm sorry.
Well, additional cuts. Yeah, additional cuts. I'm, I'm looking at additional cuts.
Okay.
Well, I think too, if we could have that at Barb's desk too, that, to see where we have spent there. I think it's hard to know how are we going to cut if, I don't really know where we're spending.
Director Riley.
I just want to clarify, you're asking for the breakdown of 305? Is there, but is everything in 305, like the attorney's fees are, or you said 307?
I can certainly run a report and it's probably going to be, I, we, I'll have this one because that's what matches the list, but we can certainly run a report for anything that crosswalks to 305? Because it's listed as a consultant in the UFRS world and not the MDE, but it's not the report that, so I can do that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Director Weisberg.
And it will only be general fund.
Okay, yep, perfect.
Oh, that's good.
And then can we see, what could we cut from this consultant list, dollar wise?
Yeah, even as I look at this, I mean, if I just look quickly at this, for instance, Barbara Nickel was communications who subbed in when our communications director was on maternity leave. Will we have that next year? I was, I was going to say we could cut that, but.
She's blushing.
That's what she wanted to say in the back.
No, I was like a teaser, but ties is no longer, we won't have that, so that'll be one that is gone. I'm just looking at some of the ones where I looked at right away that I know, you know, have pretty good sense that they won't be here anymore. So we can certainly do that. Some of the ones like the Central St. Croix Valley Cable Commission, I think that's something that we have because of our, our broadcasting here, so.
And you said already that the staff training ones, those are all gone because of what happened with?
Well, they're all, for the most part, you know, the, so if you look at those, the Center for Responsive Schools, I believe, is our developmental designs and our responsive classroom and all kinds of those things. And we're still going to do a little bit of that, so you would still see some of that. The Stanford Institute of Design, George Karos, Brave New Workshop, University of Washington, they were all part of the design workshop that we did last year. Those are consultants that we paid, but the money came in from the conference to pay for them. So that's the thing, you know, this is purely just a list of consultants. It doesn't tell you, you know, like for that example, that yes, we pay consultants to come in and do that, but the conference paid those fees, not the school district.
Director Pearson.
Is it, is there any way to notate that on the, you know? Is there a way to notate whether it's been?
There is, no.
Because I was, some of the.
Not with any accuracy.
Okay, because I thought some might be PTA dollars that might have come in and so those don't matter.
Any grant money, I mean, there is like.
But not really any way to.
No, I, you know, I could look and I know that the pedals, I know that's in part supported by a grant. I mean, there's things, but revenue and expenditures are, they're a different side of the house. And so, no, it would, it would take another staff member to go through and isolate what's going on.
So I guess, I'm just trying to clarify, so. I missed it, I'm sorry. So this is, this, what I have in front of me is 2017, 18, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, we don't have a full year, otherwise, we were trying to give you a full year picture.
Right, and so it's approximately 1.7 for that year. So what would we typically budget or, well, does it get budgeted like that in the 305? Or is it not really something you?
So it's multiple. So for instance, when Dr. McDowell has his professional development budget and we're bringing in developmental designs and he knows that he has, let's say he's got $50,000, he's gonna, he pays for it out of that budget, but it comes here because it's not, it's not a, a school district staff person providing that service.
Got it.
You know, when I look at this, I know right off the top of my head, the bindery, those are usually for our kids and we bind books for them and we probably, it was probably paid for through a PTO, PTA type thing. Magic Man, I'm pretty sure was something that happened in one of the schools. It was probably a artist in residence type of thing.
So then I guess going at, from, going at it from the angle of how it gets budgeted, that sounds too complicated. But if, it would be possible for, for you or someone to give us a little bit more clarity about where we might be, realistically be able to save or where we're already going to be saving likely? Because like you said, a lot of this is professional development that we've just decided to cut. So what does that look like? You know, what's going to be the impact?
Yeah, I think, and we, the easier part of that really is with the staff training thing because that's, you know, if you look at security, which is just above that, City of Oak Park Heights Police Department and Washington County Sheriff's Service and Security Services, all of those listed there are for, I'm not sure with Austin Peterson, that must have been a dance or some.
City of Stillwater.
Okay, that was probably for us, for one of our board meetings. But for the first five, those are all security for our secondary schools. So, you know, that is an option, you could say we aren't going to have a full-time person.
But those are resource officers?
And then the.
But to make this one manageable, Kristin, is this easier handled like we handle disbursements? They get their question, send it to you ahead of time, or is there a better way to do it? You want to think on that one a little bit?
I do, like I said, the, the only, and I, I understand certainly the want for the answer of what's covered, you know, what's coming from other sources and that, I, I don't know that, again, I'm going to have any sort of accuracy as far as some, I'm going to be able to tell right away. And then there's going to be others where something happened at a site level that me and my department aren't going to have any. I mean, grants are easy, I see those. PTA stuff or donations or, you know, there's no way of me seeing that. And so if the question is particular to, I'm looking at this, you know, what is it? Bring it up at the, at a disbursement level, it's in descriptions, we can certainly answer it. Anything that says this is offset by anything, it's going to get a little bit harder to respond.
And some of them are, are kind of like pest control, you gotta do those kind of things.
Yeah, you do, especially if we're not vacuuming.
And they're budgeted, I think the piece that might be helpful.
It's inverse proportion, yes.
Or they just eat away, we don't need to vacuum.
Director Weisberg.
And I guess my, my whole point in bringing it up is of the 1.7 million dollars, is there anything we look at? Can we touch this list? And then how much could we touch it?
Sure.
Answering at a hundred-foot view? This list ebbs and flows depending on, depending on the year and I'll answer specific to my department. There are some years we just have an audit, we pay our auditor. Every other year, we have to have an actuarial study. So now we have an auditor that's 70 grand or 75 grand and we have an actuarial study that's 15. We've just added 15,000 to a budget that is going to be part of our preliminary budget because I know it needs to be done. But just to reduce and say we're going to do that doesn't help. In a few years, whether it be two or three, you're going, we're going to be out to the community. We're going to have election judges and, and marketing material. There's going to be communications that go out. That's in, it is going to affect this. And so this budget in particular, the things that we need will ebb and flow, they just will, based on the natural cycle of what the district is doing and what is mandated and required. And that is not guaranteed as a cycle of every year. So it's not, it's, it's not a good answer in that it doesn't feel good. But I will say that, I mean, we could be looking at 117,000 that was spent this year and we might be up to 130 this, in 1819 because of the actuarial study. It's, that's the challenge with this budget. Now, again, if the approach is, let's control the things we can control, like we don't have an attorney, you know, whatever that looks like, that's certainly your decision to make. But when you just look, it's, it's very hard to take line item by line item and say, well, we're just going to cut and we're not, we're not going over 171,000, Kristin. Well, we might not have a choice because of every other year type of situations or every third year that we're in.
But they're all within a budget. So even if you look at the second, if you look at the second page with educational programming, Youth Service Bureau, Minnesota Alliance with Youth, well, I'll use Youth Service Bureau because many of you are familiar with that. So you see a, a fee there that we pay them because they're consultants, because they don't work for the school district, but they provide mental health support and at the secondary schools. Hudson YMCA, I imagine that's some type of partnership, I'm not aware of that one, I'm not sure if you are or not, Kristin. Orthopedic Sports is for our athletic trainers. Thousand Petals is for the yoga com. That money, the 8,500 for that, we got a grant, so it's listed here, but we didn't pay it. Equity Alliance, 8,100, that is something that we paid from our Equity and Integration Fund. Same for the JK Movement. Everything else below that, and I, you know, there might be one in there that I missed, but everything else below that is from our schools submitting through their budgets to have artists in residence or people to come in and speak about careers, different things where they get some type of a a career, artist in residence type of thing, many of them can be through PTOs. So I think the part of what I'm hearing is, this is the amount of money we spent on consultants, but it's not the amount of money that came out of our general fund. Does that make sense?
And like the Hudson YMCA, that's our lifeguard services, I mean, that's an essential. It doesn't look like it on this page, but we need lifeguards.
I think that's the catch though, is that when you see that, it looks like a big number and I understand that. But that isn't what we've taken out of the, if we've paid for something here, then it's been reimbursed through our schools giving us that money or the partnership plan.
Is it like that page you were just referring to, would that be part of the building allocation fund that was cut already?
Yeah, or their, or their professional development. Like the, the, a thousand petals is the yoga com, so that's professional development. But that was, and I don't know if Stephen's still here, but that, we wrote a grant for that, so we get it.
And sometimes that shows up in the disbursements, it tells you where it's been funded. You know, this is like what struck me as we started off today's meeting, we had a couple of students come in here and encourage us to go to the Equity or Reimagine Minnesota, there's a cost to it. I think it's relatively small, but at the same time, if we're trying to keep board development down, you're kind of caught in the middle a little bit too. Director Weisberg.
That's my last, I just, I'm trying to, is there any way that we could set a dollar amount and say we could decrease our consulting budget by this much? That's basically my question.
At this point rhetorical, next time we'll, we'll consider.
I think they're coming from so many different sources. So we're talking about our budget. A budget is not just cutting expenses. A budget is also trying to identify alternative. is also trying to identify alternative opportunities for revenue increasement, so I would like to suggest that we think seriously about ways that we might be able to grow our enrollment, if there would be something we could do, I know that St. Paul Public Schools had an initiative, and they engaged in a, a community-wide sort of partnership with families, and they literally went door-to-door trying to encourage people to sign up and come to their schools, and it increased the enrollment, it was successful, and it was really fun, and it was in the paper, it was really awesome, I mean, I'm not saying that's what we do, but I'm saying, are there some ways that we can grow our enrollment, every additional student that we have in our schools does bring in revenue, and, you know, I think that's something we should think about, and then, another one is, I wonder if we could, at some point, in the very near future, look at our healthcare expenses, and really analyze whether or not we could be getting our healthcare costs in a more cost-effective way, and, and save some money that way, I, I'm not really sure how, I don't, I don't know, because we haven't really talked about it in a long time, you know, we get updates on our, the expenses, but are there opportunities for us to find better partnerships or something to, to be able to do that cheaper, and, yeah, we've already talked about the other idea, so.
I like the idea of a marketing plan, we have some expertise.
Yeah, Krista, go ahead.
I will tell you, our team is doing a lot of really great work on marketing, and we have a lot of really great ideas that we could do beyond, but I think it ties into your long-range facility planning conversation. Pretty tightly, one of the things we've had a lot of conversation with is the preschool and kindergarten level is where we need to get kids, and where we have the greatest success when we do get them, we've seen that over time, the problem is, we have no room in our preschools, quite honestly, in some of our buildings, and so, it's very hard for us, in fact, we just had this conversation the other day, we couldn't put some information out that we wanted to, because we don't have room, and all you do is upset people if you promote this great program, and they try to get in and they can't, so, I would say we have some fabulous ideas, we'd love to talk with you about, but I think it needs to come as part of your long-range facility plan, as you look at what that means for our district overall with space and capacity in our buildings.
Two things that'll be fun for you to consider, though, we do have a waiting list of students from outside the district for Spanish immersion, 11 or 12, and then I think we have about 14 in district that are waiting to get in that program, and then, we have multiple students that we've had to put on a waiting list for early childhood, and we did have a conversation with a community organization in Lake Elmo, that might have rooms for us for the Southern District, that Director Pelletier hooked us up with, and we're exploring that, but that might be room for another, I'm guessing, maybe 30 early childhood students, so that would be another good thing.
Mark.
Oh, well, I just, I was going to say, we're like, I agree with Director Stivlin about increasing enrollment, and I'm sure we're going to be talking about this more, but I'd, I'd say its name is Brookview, that's, we can, we can capture students right there, and that'll increase our enrollment.
Director Pelletier.
Thank you very much for that comment, Director Burns, and also, you know, a, a big way that we can increase our enrollment and do just that is by our, doing our job as school board members and ambassador, positive ambassadors of this district, and I think by touting the, the many wonderful things that this district has going for us, is going to, is going to brush away the, the negative that wants to permeate continually, and that is going to bring new families here, so if we really want to get new families, we need to walk the walk, so.
Director Weisberg.
I was just curious, does, one of, one of the things that he, Dr. McDowell was talking about, when he said the reducing professional development, that did not touch instructional coaches, correct? So, I know we had talked about before, if we could make, if we could maybe add to the list, any adjustment in the instructional coach program, for next time.
I can say follow-up on that, I, I'm a little bit concerned that the QCOM money that is paying for some of the instructional coaches is, is not something that will necessarily be there for, forever, and if it went away, what would, you know, what would we do, what's, you know, it's just, just a thought, stability wise.
That question was asked at the...
Or did you get an answer?
Yeah.
The answer was that the first school that was in QCOM is at Hopkins, and she's going to visit Hopkins in a couple days, that's the answer I got.
Yeah, to see if it's working.
It was not an answer.
It wasn't very revealing.
It was, it was a very interesting answer, it was, she didn't say yes or no.
And I did it right out of the box.
Thanks for trying, yeah.
We will continue, we're talking about the new state commissioner, was at the C breakfast this morning, and we were trying to, because we've heard indications that she may have a particular perspective on it, but she chose not to share that today, so.
Thank you, just to piggyback on what Sarah and Mark and Jen have said, just a plug for the retreat, what you can be thinking of over the weekend, we're going to do some brainstorming, so what kinds of things do we hope to see, little things, big things, and I think those things will help us get more excited about what's happening, and, you know, try to get us out of budget-cutting mentality and into what, you know, what do we want to see for our kids, and so, just, if you think about things over the weekend, jot them down and bring them with you.
One more thing to clarify, or have you think about, so, with the current, what we have for the professional development, cutting it by the, what we did was, we cut that by the cost of the instructional coaches, if you choose to do that, we can't go back, then we're, we'll have no professional development, the way that we're making responsive classroom developmental designs literacy, the things we've already started, is by having those coaches who've been trained to help with job embedded professional development for our teachers, so just know that if that's still, you know, then you should have a conversation about, are we cutting instructional coaches, instead of dilly-dallying around with the money, if that's really what you, you know, your purpose and your hope is, then, then don't vote on the 348, and vote on cutting that program, because we can't do both, we can't do 348 and then come back and say, we're going to, we want you to get rid of the instructional coaching program.
And I didn't suggest getting rid of the whole, I said, adjusting it, maybe we don't need one in every elementary school, maybe there could be a reduction that way, that's all I was suggesting.
Anyone else?
I just want to make one kind of macro-level comment, that I, I've said this before, and I'm, you'll probably hear me say it 10 more times, but from a big-picture perspective, I would like to see this board, because I, and this is years and years in the making, I feel like we're, we've been in this cycle of, we, we put out these great ideas, or, and we don't maybe get these programs to the level that they should be at, and then we go in this cutting mode, and, you know, I'll repeat myself, they never had the chance to get to where they could be, and I'm, I'm kind of sick and tired of Stillwater being okay with average and cutting, we are much better than that, so, I want us to really, as we move forward, look at the budget, or whatever it is that we're going to be looking at, but we are higher and better than that, so I'm tired of, of this, and I'm sure we all are, so let's think about how we can fight for more than average.
February 19th, we get our say at the Capitals.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a real chance we could get three and three, instead of two and two, that changes the budget, that's, you know, additional funds.
Step in the right direction.
It's a step in the right direction.
It's a good number.
I mean...
Absolutely. Anything better than the...
A girl could dream, right?
Yeah, absolutely, and, but, again, and because I, my, the nature of my job description says Debbie Downer, you also don't have anything for contracts built into this.
I was going to say that earlier.
So...
Right.
Back to the context of the entire ball, I, I agree with you in the more, it helps in this discussion, but then there's that discussion.
Right, right, that's true, I was thinking about that yesterday, I was going to mention it earlier, that if we could find additional cuts, so that we could give ourselves at least some wiggle room to either, you know, to, to do whatever we need to do, I guess, you know, when it comes to negotiations, when it comes to fund balance, whatever it might be, yeah.
And I am completely serious when I say, save that enthusiasm, some of that passion, some of the pain you may be feeling today, we need to direct that, and not keep it a secret, I mean, this, this today, this is no fun, and, and it's much, much more enjoyable to add positions, or add programs, or do that, so I agree with you, this is a painful process, and, and I think everyone finds it very distasteful.
This is sort of unrelated, but when you're just talking about the legislature, and the email that you sent out about snow days, and it said, it would be nice to contact, like, specifically, who should we direct letters to?
I actually have, I was going to share this with Shelley, I got a call from Shelley Christensen today, and she has a list of a few things she would like to do some work on that, and so, I'll bring those to you to the retreat, she just wanted feedback, she had four things, and one of them was that, and so, today she was getting her research team to see, help her put something together to push it, I think St. Paul and Minneapolis are also, because they're in worse shape than we are, so I'll bring you what I know on Monday, and then we'll have the, the notes for you to call people, and she'll, she was trying to check in who we could connect with that might actually push it forward, who's working on that, so, thank you.
Anything else? I think we are adjourned, thanks everybody.